Would it be absolutely the worst thing in the world if we had one of those situations? Where we began to look at, you know, not closing either school, but just having children attend school in a different building.
Yeah, exactly. What I'm saying is that Rochester is the pre-K through four, three.
Depending on what you have. It could work the other way.
One of the things.
Yeah, it could go the other way.
Right, that like Stockbridge was the younger grades, pre-K through, that's three or two, and then four, five, six.
How much do you value your group? That's what is really, you know, that's what we're really talking about, to have kids the same age.
If we could build up our early childhood program like the pre-K, we could have an early childhood school and then the older grades.
If you took that article that Carl passed on about the, over where I live, the districts over there that are putting daycare in their schools with their preschool programs because they have empty classrooms, and the preschool numbers are jumping through the roof.
The model is Sharon. They've made money every year on kids. They do a program where they have kids and then they do aftercare. The parents pay rather than send them to a babysitter or nursery or whatever. They keep them there in the school and they pay. And they make $80,000, $90,000 a year on that. And every time there's a budget deficit in Sharon, we don't have any problems because that money's there, you know, to cover it.
Although I think that it's important that we, they don't make $80,000, they are able to afford an extra, at least an extra FTE or another person.
Exactly.
There's more, I think it's, I think it's important that when we think about how we're framing our conversations, we try to think about the opportunities and the resources and the expectations and not the costs and the taxes. Because that's, you know, when we start talking about, you know, we're spending $18,000 a kid, you know, we're throwing a pinto at every child every year, it becomes, it frames things in a whole different, in a whole different, you know, argument.
This is, I mean, look at this, these are the broad, really great.
Right. I mean, the last time in Stockbridge, and this was a few principals ago, we, when we felt that we were in a place that we could have this kind of conversation, what we talked about as goals for curriculum and faculty was, well, first of all, the time, you know, again, we were always multi-age classrooms, so we wanted a two-year curricular cycle. So that the idea that, you know, whether it was more on environment one year and more on like state history the other year, but that the idea that the kids wouldn't be repeating material in the same classroom. So having a two-year curricular cycle, but then really trying to reach out and understand what the schools that were receiving our seventh, our, you know, rising seventh graders were finding deficits, you know, was it about literacy, was it about communication and speaking and presentation?
Yeah, so that's good. I thought at some point we had talked about tracking our kids.
Right. So we need to, I think, you know, again, as we, as you start implementing Lotus, Lotus, Otis groups, you know, we could be trying to get some of that feedback in there because, you know, we talk about, when we talk about how, you know, the kids aren't doing well going to college, you know, that's, that's not even, I mean, yes, it's our problem because we're their, we're their, we're their, their local education authority, but really what we need to be thinking about in terms of focus of our schools is just getting the kids so that if they choose to go to seventh grade at the Sharon Academy, or Woodstock, or Randolph, or wherever they pick, or White Oak Tech, I mean, you know.
But they're ready.
Yeah.
Well, Otis, we're gonna have a training, we talked to the Otis people yesterday, we're gonna have a training with the principals on next Wednesday. We have loaded in it the latest Star 360 scores, we have the state test, the S-Back tests, they're all loaded. We want to put in some other evaluations that we've talked about, PNOA and POA, that's math and, what is it, primary.
Operations.
Operations.
American operations.
That's what that stands for. And we've identified exactly the tests, tests that we want, or the assessments that we want to put in there. The main thing about Otis is just knowing who those kids are and getting what they, getting them what they need.
Right.
And that's the purpose of it. It's not like anything else. I mean, we're not reporting stuff out to the state or anything.
Right, no, I just think it's important for us to be able to use that tool to track the kids just like you're gonna be tracking the white, you know, the WRV kids from K to 12.
And that's a place where the board, I think, can help administrators significantly. One of the things I would just like to throw on the table is that when the board does their goal setting this year, they're very specific about literacy and mathematics improvement. Boom. I mean, there's other things I know you have to do, and it's your choice what you decide to pick for your goals, but one of the things I think is beneficial to a school system and some of those school systems where you see academic progress is where this academic progress goal starts at the board level and works its way all the way down. So Lindy and I would be asking teachers, when you put in your individual goals, please make sure one has to do with improving the academic, the mathematical understanding and the literary understanding of the youngsters in your class. Because then it's, I had a teacher tell me once that they couldn't, they couldn't do extra inter, the extra intervention that a youngster needed, and this was in our district. They couldn't do the extra intervention that the youngster needed because the parents did not want the youngster pulled out of any activity that everybody else was doing, and the board supported that. Well, then there is no time in the day to do intervention because other youngsters are involved in activities every minute of the day.
But that, that's all gonna change.
But it could be a push-in instead of a pull-out.
It could be, but this trial needed even more than that, Janine. So my only point was, go ahead.
We can show that they're gaining progress. You will have to, you'll have to change, keep them away with wild horses, the parents from wanting that achievement. Once they can see it, you know.
Okay, the same way I'm gonna say to you, and I go by the data and the research, everybody can be really, really excited about this. If they don't see success within the first six weeks, it goes away.
It goes away.
Right. And I'm, I'm most convinced that with our lowest kids, they are not gonna see any more success with this. Are there infrequent tests with FNP? There aren't, from what I could see.
Benchmark.
The benchmark.
Benchmark assessments.
And we're gonna load, we're gonna load those into Otis too.
Okay.
That's part of it.
So we'll be able to see how they're doing within the program.
We're gonna have, I didn't wanna have just one test, one thing.
No.
You know, we need to see them from a lot of different sides, but if you can show parents that their kids are improving, that their grade, you know, being on grade level or approach to grade level is coming along, they can't help but wanting to watch their kids.
Oh, they'll want, because if you build it, they'll come.
Speaking of which, can we think about putting a column at the end of that that said Hancock, Granville, and Pittsfield, and tracking what their population is? Because when we think about our potential students in our student counts, those are the three towns that send us. And if we're talking about, if our goal is to build a quality and attractive, you know, educational program, we should, you know, when we think about the resources that we, that we could be able to pull on, you know, it would be those children. I mean, when we say, okay, how can we, how can we gain or how can we maintain enrollment, managing or courting or putting together something that draws in, you know, if we have an attractive program, most of that's who we're gonna pull in.
Do you know, Carl, if Stockbridge used to have more Pittsfield, there's only a handful right now.
Yeah, we used to have, I mean, it went in waves. There used to be a number of Pittsfield kids that came there. A lot of it had to do, I think, it seems like it has to do with parental, which way the parents go.
Right, yeah.
We had a lot of parents from Pittsfield that were coming towards Bethel and towards 89, and so those, there was a whole wave of kids that went to Stockbridge and then to Sharon Academy.
But there was also that personal, I mean, when I lived here the first time, it was the Pittsfield-Stockbridge school. We all did together, we did it together. And then there was some falling out between the two towns, and Pittsfield took away, and we, you know, just Stockbridge.
It's marketing, folks, it's marketing.
Yeah.
That's what we have to do, which show our good side.
Well, then, this is, this seems to be.
But Killington is not that good.
But, so going back.
That's not on tables.
It is. But going back to.
Because I was there for this special ed. I mean, they put a kid in a wrong program for the whole summer without ever realizing they did. This is Killington. We could get, well, we could get these kids.
I think it is marketing. We definitely need, we definitely need to do with marketing. There's definitely some that I think we could do to improve our.
Because these are the given.
To improve our program. But one grandmother this summer really told me something that opened up my eyes. She's losing three or four grandchildren, they're not gonna stay in Rochester. And she said, the reason is Rochester is a very difficult town for young families. There is no place to work.
Or to buy a house.
That you can't, don't have to try. So they're going north to Waitsfield, and one of the other families is going over to Middlebury. So we need to market, but we also need to be realistic. It is a difficult place for young families.
Yep.
And most of the kids, as far as I know, every child at Rochester is losing this summer is all about employment. Because I've had conversations with the parents or grandparents about why they're leaving. And most of them are very sad to leave, but employment is what's forcing them out.
Well, now, so let's go back to that, why employers will move if there's good schools.
Right, it's all in.
And people won't move there. So it's kinda like.
Well, I think we actually have a changing demographic in our valley. I think Granville, I joke around that I call it South Warren, now just like Pittsfield is kind of become a Killington more town. And I don't think those towns, those people that are moving down from like the Mevermore Valley to our valley, they don't acknowledge that they're even in a different valley anymore, but they don't even look at our schools. And I don't think the Killington folks who are living in Pittsfield, they're not looking at Stockbridge. And we need to make it, they need to know what we have.
Well, and it's like, that's what I'm saying, like, all this stuff is wonderful, but these are like the given's of what a school should be doing.
Yeah.
And of course, we're starting from pretty close to zero in a lot of ways, or at least, you know, 10 and 20 out of 100. So yes, this is the stuff we're marching forward for, but it sounds like the marketing stuff is about stuff we haven't really spent much time on, like outdoor education was a big thing in the thing, you know, we've got this whole thing and roster, what they're doing. I mean, that's the kind of, those are the kind of buzzwords that I think are gonna bring people in, if it's a really integrated part of the curriculum and not just something more, you know.
I agree with that, but I also think.
Single-handedly supporting on her own.
There's that, but I also think that the good things that we're doing, no matter what they are, need to be publicized, need to be in the paper.
I think the one biggest thing we need to work on in terms of a marketing message, I think that's a very savvy group of parents now, people who are checking things online and looking for this and that. You go online and you see our assessment data. I wouldn't necessarily put our schools at the top.
What if you just look at our website?
Our website, yeah. We need to get some resources behind that, but I do think that our achievement data is one of the bigger things that's standing in our way of being a very attractive school. I read in a book once that we should look at our achievement data in such a way that if you went to a physician and the sign over his or her door said, 46% of my patients don't make it, would you go to that doctor? And the answer is, no, none of us would. Who would go to that physician?
When I sold my house in New York, the real estate dealer said to me, tell me what district do they go to school? That was the only thing that she wanted to know. What district do your kids go to school? And when it was a good district, that gets all that.
Well, and down there, all they see on the internet is the good school ratings, you know? And how do they get them? Well, you know, all the realtors use them, and all, a lot of it has to do with test scores, you know?
It all has to do, that's what they, that's what they see. They don't see the other.
So one of the things that we're gonna do, I'll tell you, I'll tell you this right now, is each one of the, each, each one of the schools on the opening day, if I can get these done in time, is gonna have a banner over the front door that says, Raising Readers. And we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna shift them around. They're all gonna have a little different, different saying, and after about five weeks, we'll, we'll trade banners with one of the other schools and they'll get a new one. It's kinda like a poor man's message board, I guess you wanna say. But, but we have to tell people what the initiative is, what we're working on, what we're trying to do. And I'm hoping we'll get a little airtime for some of those pictures, you know, of them. But, you know, I'm talking to the principals about marketing this. How do we tell people what we're trying to do? And, no, the scores aren't there yet. They will be there, I'm confident they'll be there, but they're not there yet, and.
How much time do we have before people start, like Stockbridge people start saying, that's it, I'm done supporting this empty high school? You know, I'm just saying, and I think it's how we present it.
Well, we have, we have our.
I don't think we're at a point where we can make decisions about these buildings yet. We have until, let's see, two more years, we have three more years before we're supposed to have that five-year conversation about where we are. So, I mean, there, that's, that's pretty much where that conversation's gonna be.
And it's also what, how we say something, not just what we say. I think we should prepare the community. It takes three to five years to turn a school around. It's happened for a long time, we've been failing. I mean, my adult went all the way through all these schools.
So you never wanna mention the word failing in a PR thing about turning a school around?
No, no, I'm just saying.
Fidelima for the board, I wish one of our elementary schools was bigger and had like an empty wing sitting there. Our dilemma is if both of our schools kind of continue to tick down, and we do have to come together into one building, there's only one building big enough to do that in, and that's the one building that we're trying to figure out what we do with. That's the high school. I mean, I wish that either Stockbridge or Rochester had this wing of four classrooms sitting empty.
Right.
Because then that would be the fallback when we need to.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's one of the, that's one of the questions. Do you, do you spend, the Red, the Black River Design recommended $1.2 million to expand Stockbridge, or do you say, you know what, if we put fifth and sixth graders in Rochester, we could, we could pull back that, you know, a classroom there that we could be converting into the art space and the nurses, the nurses' space? I mean, you know, that's a question. Do we, do we say, okay, let's move into the high school? Because then that gives us space to have, you know, a classroom, one of Deb Matthews' responsive classrooms. Because right now, if a kid in our, if a Rochester kid wants to take advantage of that, they're, they're being trucked to solo, and that's why.
We actually have three kids that are taking them to those.
Right, but they're, and they're.
Or no.
Right, but I mean, the point is, we have, you know, we say, okay, well, this, this empty building is sitting here mothballed. Again, we have to look at it and not say, we've got an empty building, we gotta say, we have these assets, we have to figure out how to deploy them.
Right. So I'd like to propose a bigger vision. I think we need to explore like the Head Start Montessori model, because there's no realistic daycare options in either community that can house what we need to do. And if we get those kids in, similar to what Carl shared in our, sooner we get those families into either building or our school system, which is what we are, the more likely we can keep them.
Continue.
I mean, I think that's a great opportunity for space, however you wanna configure it, you know, whether, you know, you use the Stockbridge building for that, and then you move, I just, I see that as a great opportunity, and that's also a great way to help see test scores improve. Because then they're provided a structured, like the Montessori model works because they're working on such important skills that some parents may not know how to do it.
So just connect those two, those two ideas, I'm just throwing things on the table, but just for us to think about. If you take Carl's idea about fifth and sixth graders at Rochester, that would free up a room. And if you took Lindy's idea about the Montessori school for preschools and aftercare for parents who can't just drop everything at 11:30 or 11:15 and come and pick kids up, that would free up a space in that building to have that for the Stockbridge area. The Rochester area has a building already that we could expand into aftercare if, if the board decided to do so. So that's kind of the, kind of the dot connecting, I think, that can come out of these ideas we're throwing on the table.
Well, does Capstone do it? Well, doesn't Capstone have Head Start?
I don't know. So with Carl's idea of, you know, the fifth and sixth graders in Rochester, we couldn't do it currently in our elementary building unless we take a class out of there though. We would have to remove a pre, because it's.
Well, we could move the library, if we assume the high school was staying open, we could move the library to the high school, and that would free up a class.
Because we were also discussing that the projections for our preschool next year are, to be able to offer an extended day program, you need more than the one classroom that we have. So on.
That was one critique I heard, and somebody chose Stockbridge over Rochester, was the idea that I think a three-year-old could stay the whole day.
Right.
A four-year-old. Five days a week.
Four-year-old, yeah. And that Rochester didn't, and it was very hard on working people.
So I was on the. My guess is, if you did that, where we went to 3 o'clock in the afternoon or 5 o'clock with aftercare, our three and four-year-old programs.
I'm sure they would. Which in turn helps on the education of our kids.
Because they were, this person wanted to be in Rochester and felt they couldn't because of the times.
So we explored, when I was on the Rochester board, we, we explored, obviously, trying to do aftercare and beforecare in the day and night.
Ethan, I can imagine.
And we went through the Orange County, is that, who's Sharon, is it Orange County?
Yeah, Orange County Child Center.
Right.
Parent-Child Center.
Parent-Child Center. And at the time, they were, it was not feasible to do that in the, in that daycare building. They looked at it, they really explored the possibilities, and what it boiled down to was, again, space. Because that building was licensed for 15 kids, and due to a half-day program and the changeover between, there would be a time that there would potentially be more than 15 kids. And the aftercare. So I totally think that, I agree that this is probably a really good way for us to start thinking, you know.
Well, I agree. And I think Lauren's an amazing resource too, because she's got that whole.
Who, Lauren? Oh, she's an amazing.
For Lauren.
She's actually, she's actually almost certified to be a director, so she could move into a different role if they want. She is the, she's the preschool teacher at Rochester right now. The other thing, without going into a lot of detail, because I don't think the board should spend its time today on this detail, but we have a great problem to solve, and it is gonna be a problem, is that we've got 13 or 14 three-year-olds coming in to our preschool in Rochester. If we continue the same expanded program that we do for four-year-olds, we would have no availability for three-year-olds, zero, not even one three-year-old. Well, I guess we could have one three-year-old that could come in the following year. So we're going to have to have more space because of this increased population, which is a wonderful problem to have, but we have to solve it.
And I think we need to work our hardest to accommodate this, because as we're, we don't want this to limit kids, we want.
Absolutely not.
But in your communities on the other side, how did the communities feel about when the, is it subgrade, was it Whiting was the other one, when they split the week grades?
So we're about two years ahead, three years ahead, I guess. And I was the chair of their 46 unification committee, and we brought seven schools together under one school board. So there were seven schools, blah, and what? And.
Absolutely.
Well, from what I hear about your efforts, ours weren't quite as bad, difficult. So now we're at the point of redesigning schools, and we've had, we had four schools that were 40 kids or under, and we just simply said point blank, we cannot continue to run four schools with 40 kids or under. It's four roofs, it's four eating plants, it's three principals, we just can't do it. The numbers just don't support it. So it wasn't easy for everybody, but most of the people who had youngsters in school, and that's another thing we have to watch for, when we have public meetings, we have to kind of look around and say, who's here? It's not that everybody.
The parents don't come.
Right.
The parents are never there.
Right.
The tax meeting was here.
Right. So we, let's see, they were all K-6, pre-K 6 schools, and now we have Whiting who's just a preschool. They do the aftercare, they do the till 5 o'clock at night care. Sudbury is just 5 and 6, and Lester is K through 4. We're probably gonna do additional combined next year.
How do they like it now that it's, they've done that?
I'm, I'm still on the board, I'm not the chair of the board anymore, because they stepped down from that, so I don't hear as much as I used to, but primarily, I only heard from five or six people who didn't like it. And their opinions were valuable, but they were five or six people. We have heard from very.
Their parents?
No, we've heard from very few parents who don't like it, because this started to happen pretty quickly. We expanded second language program, we expanded PE, we've got instrumental music in two, one or two schools that never had it before. So we knew the minute we started to make these structural changes, that opportunities had to come pretty close behind.
Right.
Because that's what we said we could do if we combined it, and that's true. As we combined, we freed up dollars.
I'm just gonna mention this, but you have an opportunity right now to add language, because we just hired a phys ed teacher who's a native Spanish speaker.
I didn't think about that, and I could.
Oh.
You know, I just interviewed her yesterday, and she's, she's.
Could go more than two days.
She's, we're originally from what country?
Uruguay.
Uruguay.
Very bright. She's gonna be your phys ed teacher in Stockbridge two days a week, and I'm sure we're not paying her, it's a family that just came up here from Miami, they, the parents.
She's not a professor?
Is she a teacher of color?
The father works at GW Plastics.
She's a teacher of color? I'm very excited.
He's a private pilot, she told us. Is that what he does for GW Plastics?
I don't know what he does. I don't know what he does.
So do we have the money to do that?
No. Not that I know of, but it's a missed opportunity.
Yeah, it really is.
We're looking at, we just have extra time in her day, so on top of like movement, we're gonna do a little mini like 20-minute enrichment block, two days a week.
So she's working two days a week, and.
So how can we get her?
We have to get her.
Each day is about $10,000 for the year. So if we were to add one day a week, it would be another $10,000, two days a week, 20.
And I think if we looked at all our hirings and the vacancies we've had over the summer in some staff positions, we may come close to that amount of money.
Yeah, she hired some newbies, yeah.
And we've had some, a couple of.
That would be, that would be another thing that would bring people to us. That would be a huge issue.
Well, if we're gonna hire a second language teacher, we'd have to get into the certification piece, but she certainly could do something.
Right, we're just affording. Like, based on student interest.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, this is what we were talking about with Christine.
But if it begins getting that.
I don't wanna just rail the conversation, but it just came to us, you know?
Does she have the availability?
Yes. Not doing anything else except teaching two days a week phys ed.
So she might.
So she's got three days a week, probably free.
She wants to be more, like, she was disappointed that winter wellness might happen on a day that she gets.
Full-time would be $30,000 more.
The other thing we started to do, I guess.
Full-time would be $30,000, besides the 20 that we're already paying. It's about $50,000 for the whole contract.
And could we hire, I mean, yeah, this is, this is, this is almost executive session.
Let us think about that, and we'll bring you back, we'll bring you back on our proposal. Let us think about that.
It'd be nice.
The other thing, the other thing we wanna let the board know is that we spoke with All Hunger when we hired her about Lindy's and my desire to have her working very closely with a PE teacher in Rochester, so that in their individual areas of expertise, I'm just pulling these out of the air, they're not accurate, but if hers was health and, if hers was folk dance and his was juggling, that he might go to Stockbridge and do a four-week juggling unit, and she'd come to Rochester and do a four-week folk dance.
I know that he has a big focus on, on the garden and.
Right, so we're talking about exchanging staffs freely back.
That needs, yeah, the more we can do that, and the more we can, can make that happen, the more we can. Carl's thing's talking about, you know, looking at these rooms, these buildings as resources, looking at our teachers as resources, and his idea, because I often, I think we get, we look at these things, we're like, oh, we gotta spend $500,000 here
I think we get, we look at these things, we're like, oh, we gotta spend $500,000 here or $220,000 there, and as opposed to, hey, what have we got? And what can we reallocate to make it a lot cooler and a lot more efficient and a lot more attractive with just what we've got? In other words, if we have a Stockbridge-Rochester elementary show in the auditorium that brings the Stockbridge people up and they see their kids on this big stage, that's using our assets well to show off what we've got.
We actually just had a conversation a couple of days ago about, we're thinking about getting the dates set for this year's concerts and everything.
Yeah, I was disappointed last year that they were broken out.
They need part of the.
Well, there's two, there's two components to that, you have to think about little kids all in one spot, like little, little, all in one spot, late at night, that's not ideal for any person, whether you're the teacher or the parent.
Or the principal.
Or the principal, I mean, that just results in kind of multi-day meltdown, but it really does, you change a little kid's routine, I'm learning, you change a little kid's routine, messes their world, but how do we make that work? What's doable and how do we get there?
I think maybe we ought to be thinking about combining classes for thematic units. You know, certain times of the year, we're working on a thing together with bringing both teachers together, wrote both classes together, little by little, I don't know what those units would be, but maybe something that they're doing. You know, maybe we gotta try to do that, you know, more intentionally during the year.
And what would help us there is if we could get a really good handle on what would it cost to turn that second zone on in the high school, because that picks us up a classroom, a good-sized classroom, where if Faye was doing robotics, she could invite Maureen's fourth, fifth, and sixth graders over, or if Maureen was doing, well, Maureen was doing something, she could invite Faye over, they have the classroom there, you know, you've got that bigger classroom there, but that one classroom would give us more opportunity to do these kinds of things, but. So I've got an appointment with Frank Sever, who's a retired guy from Green Mountain Tower, he's going to try and explain our high school power bill to me, because to me, it makes no sense, it's going down virtually nil, even though we've got everything shut off but that one zone. And he says it's all about load over the last two years and they bill on these averages and blah, 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 blah. Well, I'm using the word average.
No, no, no.
They bill in a way, they bill in a way that I'm not, just because I'm going on camera, I want to be accurate.
Two-year averages is what we're dealing with right now.
They bill in a way that I'm not familiar with, so I really want to find out from him before I do it, but it's virtually going down not much at all and we can't figure out why.
Well, and one of the things we had talked about initially when we talked about the
Megan, you're so good raising your hand, and I think you just need to jump in and nobody's going to call on you.
Not that kind of crowd, just do it, word it out.
A random, I, not a random idea, but something I've been thinking about, about the high school building and how it costs, have you ever considered just selling the high school building back to our Rochester town and then renting the space that we need from them, so we're not needing for spots?
Well, do we know that they would cover all the maintenance and everything like that of that building?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess if we're focused on.
Well, actually, that's exactly what we're supposed to switch on.
Well, yeah, I mean.
The second hour, the second hour is.
Black River Design.
Black River.
How's that?
We're kind of moving into it.
Yeah, well, one of the things we had said at our, at our meetings when we were talking about the buildings were the idea that, you know, in September and October and in, you know, April, May, and June, using that high school building is, is a lot cheaper than it is at a winter.
I can't do that for you.
I don't think we've proved that.
Right, that's, that was just our assumption.
That was our assumption.
We didn't have to, you know, that in, in September, October, we don't have to turn it.
I think we actually didn't, we disproved it this year, I think, I remember Bonnie saying that the bills were exactly the same.
Yeah, that's what she's saying now.
Not exactly, but they're not going down much considering what we have shut off.
Unless we, like, they're, you know, some two-year cycle that we'll see some big drop.
Except for with the oil, I believe we, the oil, the actual oil expenditure was. That went down a little bit. But a, a small amount compared to when it was running at full steam.
Right, you would think it would have dropped a lot.
Can we, can we, you know, do we know what was the average temperature during the winter, you know, was it a mild winter or a, or a heavy winter in terms of?
It was a long winter and we know that.
It was a heavy, it was a long, heavy winter.
Yeah, it was a long winter, so as far as heating bill, heating costs, that would explain why even cutting it down, it was, it was long because we had to keep it on.
And in some ways, turning that second zone on may, let me think about this, may be the only solution for those 13 preschoolers coming in, because we're probably going to need a second room, probably, and the art class is now in the only classroom, is the only classroom that we move on, so.
Can I just go back for a sec, just because I want to make sure we feel like we've finished this, you know what I mean, like, just to say, we, we agree on all this?
Yes, we agree and support that.
We agree on all this, we support all this, we don't have second language up there, we don't have enhanced art curriculum up there, two things, I would love to be part of that.
Y'all mad up there, lots of boards.
I'm going to ask the board for money to buy a second banner that says raising mathematicians.
Yes, definitely.
So mathematicians is a hard word.
Don't be clashing with my agenda. Outdoor experiences, maybe not.
Tell me again, I'm sorry.
Raising reading will raise math.
Outdoor education will enhance arts and second language.
I hope they grow.
I think those are the three, three educational areas that we feel strongly about.
Agenda.
We all agree.
I also think better food for.
I support your math, Bonnie.
Wellness, yeah.
Farm-to-table nutrition, we've talked about.
Another grant I think that might be out right now that will be due.
Enhanced art, outdoor education.
I think sometime in September, October.
Enhanced art, second language.
I remember I missed it by like.
The Roseover Grant?
I remember.
I wanted data-driven instruction.
And like the Harold.
I just.
The grants are ready.
I just blanched, this is what your tax dollars stay for this week, I blanched 25 heads of broccoli that came from our school gardens so we could use, and throw them so we can use them.
Awesome.
I was like, oh no, they're going.
Great, nice for you.
I'm trying to get some broccoli from Al Hunger.
That's excellent.
See, but I just want to go back to something that somebody said, if we're really interested in raising achievement levels, it would be crucial that we figure out this, this preschool program, so that every single child that wants to attend preschool.
I think, yeah.
Expanded.
A full day.
Expanded.
Five hours a day.
Yeah, for, for all, three and four, for all three and four-year-olds, to have the opportunity to do it.
Talking about where we're going to put our first money.
But we have to. Charge for.
Well, that would be, I mean, if, if, if we say that preschool's important, you know, that's not, we can ramp up outdoor education or we can ramp up food during the year, we really can't start preschool in November. If we're going to say that we want to have these kind of preschool opportunities, doesn't that mean we need to be offering that in a month?
You know what might work is that if we got this flushed out, and something that Ethan said this morning, maybe we'd break off into two groups, these might, these things might break up into two big umbrellas, curriculum program pieces and facility pieces. Maybe we could divide up and people could brainstorm around next steps or further clarification or so what.
That might come during action items.
Yeah, at that point.
Action items.
Right, at that point we could break up.
Well, of course, that's really about, well, that's really, remember when we talked about, it was really about the building, you know, are we actually going to do some of these things that they told us we need to do?
Start to go into the Black River Design to really look at what's going on with our buildings, that will help us then be able to focus on.
I could have gone.
Are the roofs going to cap?
Right, and we are already, we're getting to our second hour, so it is definitely time to start to transition.
I just wanted, it just did feel like we hadn't put a cap on this, so.
I don't think this is capped, I think we need to keep looking at this. Keep it up all the time.
I mean, if anyone wants to do it, there's another bathroom upstairs.
Flip the page, I think it's time to flip the page.
I'm just going to add this here, because I think this would help us too, this is a tactic we use over in our dist, our district, is after we're done with one of these, like closer to the end of the day, we ask this question, so what? So what are you doing, what are you doing, what are you doing? We've decided to do.
As opposed to, I thought it meant so what, like, who cares? Why bother?
Wasn't that on there?
Let's just get drunk, right?
I'm just going to put Melania wins.
And Kellyville, right?
Yeah, that's so what.
Maybe you should say so who.
So who, yeah, I think you're right, so who, so what.
Because so often we brainstorm these things and we don't work it.
You know, you're right, you're right, you're right. A brainstorm without action is just.
It's admiring a problem.
Exactly.
Which you need to do.
That's a very good way to put it, admiring the problem, what a nice problem we have. I really like that problem. Did you hear that? Nice about our problem.
Let's talk about it.
I think having 13 three-year-olds.
What do you think Washington does nine days out of 10?
What? What does Washington do now?
Nine days out of 10 talks about.
Remember you're on camera.
Jenny, they admire a problem, that's what they do, they admire a problem thoroughly. Okay, so.
I could say more about that.
I feel like in a little bit, you might take the lead on this in some ways, just because you've studied this.
Ethan, just, maybe we should just wait a second, because three of our members aren't here, three of them left.
Ah, heck, no.
Hey, did everybody get a chance to review the, the study?
I just look at the priority list, I'm going to be honest, it's just like Chinese.
Okay.
I have the bigger version of it, too.
Do you want to bring, is that what you say, girl?
Yeah, no, I'm.
Do you need it?
Hold on a sec, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm going to get a drink, you should pass it, please.
Bonnie, could I just have Chuck cheese?
Go you want.
Chuck cheese.
Yeah.
Which kind do you care?
Uh, the least, with the least amount of things in it.
Do you want crackers?
No, thank you. So electrical priority one, I see.
Just let the things that she's concerned about, that are going to come in difficult one day. There's some.
I was looking for a regular knife.
Hold on.
You know what happens?
First of all, there are bagels here, I've never had one without a bagel.
And I know we're going to get through all of this process, but it's like, hey, this is, just do this. Well, but I'm just saying, but I, that's it.
The problem with me.
Exactly.
Unless you have a.
Well, I know what you mean, I know what you mean.
Well, there's bagels here, everyone wants.
There's Sandy's bagel.
Yeah, I know. But still bagels.
Okay, now, Jenny, not conversation time. Stay with the focus.
Working lunch. Yeah, I think.
Oh, we're probably going to have a work.
Actually, it would be a good idea to do like a five-minute break, because they're doing it anyways.
Yeah, exactly, I think between sections. Sit down, come and bring your food to the table, don't stand around the table, because that's unconducive. That's what I do, I'm good at this, because everybody in rehearsals, like, you give them a five-minute break. Unless you have a good stage manager, it's like, you are.
Five-minute breaks, 20 minutes.
I was the board chair over at what, my days, they used to come to me and I'd say, because I just start, whether you were there or not, if we're going to start, except when I just start.
Ace the walls.
Shmear that.
Do that, use the bow. A schmear, I love a schmear.
What?
That's not a bad, Janice, a schmear, like, I love a schmear.
A schmear. Okay, Carl.
I'm coming back.
Okay, Carl. Jenny, Jenny. Somebody will hit me at some point, I've heard any cat blacked out here.
I need that more water.
Whoops, they're going to cut my badge on this.
I don't know, I'm just wondering if we need this, because we may need a building.
Turn down Sandy's.
I, right? I love Sandy's bagel. Well, the thing with these numbers is there's too few years to really have a trend.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's good that we start and we keep our eye on it, but there's too few years to mean anything.
My math skills weren't fully functioning to figure out hand, handbill and test field for you, Carl.
Yeah, that's fine. We can have a picture of that.
Because Rochester used to have more kids field kids.
But that was because it was a high school.
They were all high school students.
Because the three-year-old programs happened.
No, there used to be what we called the twin town that existed, it seems like lately it's not, it's more disjointed than I can, I used to think of this area as all one, and I don't think people that, I've been moving here lately, think of it that way. Like, I think, yeah.
That is a thing to re-educate, re-educate people's thinking about, hey, Rochester's right here, we got a grocery store, we got a, you know.
I mean, people in Grandville, they, I mean, I've heard them say this is the Mad River Valley, I'm like, no, you are in the White River Valley.
Geographically.
Yeah, it's a pretty big difference, it's a pretty big difference.
Well, you know, you spit on one side and it goes to the North Atlantic, the other side goes to Long Island Sound, we have nothing to do with it.
That little gulf, yep.
And I don't know what this means, but two of the last four families that have left Rochester have just moved up the valley, they've just moved up the Waiton.
Oh, yeah.
Because of employment, though? Yeah. So what are they finding outside? No, one, no, one of them is going to Burlington.
We have to talk about the buildings.
It was going to Essex, but it makes it close enough to drive.
We're not talking about the buildings.
It makes it close enough to drive when they get up into Waiton.
Well, maybe you ought to have a.
Even if you live in Grandville, you're 15 minutes closer to Burlington, you got an hour and 15 versus an hour and a half.
Maybe you guys, maybe you guys ought to have a conversation with, with a select board in the Chamber of Commerce, because it seems like we're all intertwined, you know?
Definitely, definitely.
Yeah, maybe there ought to be a joint meeting of a planning with, with, with the town fathers and, and to try to figure out.
Well, there is a new group that's gotten together, it's called envisioning.
Missing the meeting off at Wednesday, yeah.
Right, envisioning Rochester.
I noticed you haven't moved into some.
Yeah, so.
As I drove through to get gas.
Yes, we, we do, it just opened this 4th of July, so.
What happened, is that at Pierce Hall?
Pierce Hall, we have a fitness center.
I guess we do.
Yeah, and that's a new, they redid the whole downstairs, it's beautiful down there, and there's classrooms down there, like, a classroom with mirrors and stuff that they're, they're going to get some things in there, it could be a variety of things, so.
Kind of make it harder for us to sell the, to sell the elementary school and say, you guys can make a fitness center and out of our gym, you know?
When I started doing that, I was like, not now, in my head, I was like, what are we doing? But that's, that's a little big Rochester, we have a lot of buildings.
So when are we going to spend money?
We have a lot of buildings to be sold to the school.
What are we going to spend money on?
I mean, clearly it sounds to me.
Can I raise the numbers, just to make everybody?
Clearly it sounds to me that we got three buildings to support for at least, I'd say a year to two more years.
Well, we're not, yeah, we, we certainly can't close any building, I mean, we could, I suppose, but it doesn't make sense to try to, to, I don't think we can planfully close a, a building this year, no.
I would agree, yes, I would agree with that.
So we can, we can figure, we're going to, we're going to, we have to keep status quo for this year.
The status quo is going to cost us some money.
Yes, just to get the basics.
Just to get the roofs.
Well, like lighting, I know lighting was a big one around the high school and elementary school, exterior lighting, I think all, all three buildings.
The emergency lighting?
Yeah, exterior lighting was, was the big, was the one.
In fact, Vermont Roofing's over at Rochester today, we're, we're actually pushing them, the first response was, and these are my words, so, they're uncertain that the elementary roof, it's going to require huge repairs to repair it, they said it would be better to replace it, but we're not in the position of replacing the roof at the elementary school, so.
This is Rochester.
Rochester Elementary, so they're over there, so roofing is going to be an issue for spending money at both the elementary and the high school, and I understand at this point we'll do just repairs, I'll let you know what the repair cost is.
Okay, because again, sometimes if repairing it is going to cost $800,000 and re-roofing it's going to cost.
$100,000. $100,000.
I hope it's not even close to that.
But my point being, if, you know, it's that whole kind of, we may need to think about replacing it, because it's silly to spend, you know... If repairing it's 80% of the cost of replacing it.
But even if we replaced it, we couldn't do it before this winter, I don't believe.
No.
So we're gonna have to repair it to get through the winter.
I think we should consider going to the town of Rochester to assist in some of that money to pay for it. Because I do think that if the elementary school is our first aid, Red Cross Center, and Stockbridge's school, and we're asking Stockbridge Town to put some money forward for the generator. I think that if we are, if the public, the town has joy, the university, they should probably put some money into it as well.
So roofs at Rochester, I know that.
Both building?
Both elementary and high school, yeah.
Where are we with the generator?
Well, you should go to the select board when the tax bills go out. When Jenny found out.
Yes, I went to the select board unfortunately the same day that the tax bill came out.
They're telling you.
So I used the article, I said, please don't turn me down, I'm a star. You saw me in the newspaper. They wanna help and they wanna be supportive, and I think they will be.
Yeah.
They just want it, especially with the tax, they wanted to know, and rightfully so, what grants are available, how much money it would be. So I've told Lindy that and we're gonna get information to them, but they will...
But they are respective to wanting to...
Right, they just want, they want that break down.
Well, that's good.
Is that a this winter solution?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the timeline that we have before the snow block?
That's what we said, we needed it, because we lost an instructional day, we can't have that.
I mean, I thought we had cellphone service. Can we figure out a way to get cellphone service at the Stockbridge School? Is that... You know, I have it at Rochester either. Really?
That should be a conversation with Greg Lano, who's our new tech guy.
Okay.
Because they did a kind of a hotspot type of thing in Tunbridge last year, so that they got some deal that they could put...
Well, who needs cell service at the school? I mean, I know that's convenient for us in meetings, but how does that increase our kids' education? Well, it doesn't accept it as a safety thing in emergency. But if, in Rochester School, we still had to have that emergency landline, we could not use a cellphone.
Right, we have that.
So had that changed? No, but here's the deal, when you have a real emergency, such as an intruder into your building, that landline's not really much use to you. Somebody's gotta have a portable phone that they can... So one of the things I was gonna ask the board to do is if we could get a cheapest plan we could get, AT&amp;T, and only use it in emergencies, that would solve the problem of cellphone reception at Rochester in the short term.
That's what closed us one day, was phone service in Rochester.
Right, we were all through leases cell phone.
Yeah. Right, but that was with Rochester, and that's what I'm asking is because most of the teachers have AT&amp;T cell phones that worked in Rochester, so we still weren't able to have cell phone.
Well, the issue was, the parents didn't know to call one of those cell phones. I mean, it was, they wanted to call the...
Yeah, see, we have no internet, everything goes down because our hub is in the high school. Right. And there's no power in the high school when the power goes down, the generator's only on the elementary.
We were on the phone saying, eh, I don't know what I should, you know, I mean, yeah, they can't call into a main number, that's a problem.
Absolutely.
We could call out to people, but we could...
So for Rochester's no-power situation, because we have a generator, for us not to lose an instructional day, we need to have a designated cellphone emergency. That we only use in those cases. That all parents have that number as their emergency number. We've bubbles shit in Oliver's, do we have that for Stockbridge? We are going to need some, an ability to have emergency phone when we get this generator, so we can still have our own instructional day, but we don't wanna lose this instructional day without...
I don't think so, well, this is outside my realm of knowledge. I don't think so, though, because when we lost power, our emergency line still was functional. Like, we're not in two separate hubs telephone-wise.
Right.
Like you guys are. So when the power went out and we had to send everybody home that day early, we were able to plug into our emergency line and use it just fine. So we had no problem. So we would have to publish that phone, well, actually, people could call us back, parents were calling us back.
That's the weakest in Stockbridge is power.
Right.
The weakest in Rochester is the phone, you know?
Correct, and I just wanna make sure that we're covering all our bases to... Yes, we got power, but we had power, but for some reason we still come out of school. So I wanna make sure we get that all covered in Stockbridge, so we don't lose an instructional day.
Right.
It seems like there's two things we're talking about, there's not losing an instructional day when there's no power, and then heaven forbid there's the event that there's a real intruder in the school, principal, counselor, somebody's gotta have a mobile phone that can move with them. Yep.
So right now, we've got roof repairs, now, these have to happen.
These are the place where it's leaking, it leaks over the stage tremendously. Every time it rains, it leaks in Lisa Blair's office, there's big open cuts in the edges of the roofs.
Vents, those vents in the theater, just driving me nuts.
Those all got it.
I mean, I was up there in a lift doing lights, I told you this before, and you could see light.
Exactly.
There's no air seal.
Exactly.
And there's these big tubes. No, they're like kidneys.
But if the ventilation's not working, then you actually don't mind having a leak, so that...
Well, but in the...
No place for the air.
But in the winter, you're...
But in the winter, but six months of winter.
But anyways, we have to repair those two buildings, kind of to long-term figure out. Is that in our, was that in our report here from Black River about the roof? I don't think so. We've had Vermont Roofing... Correct, okay. So I just saw it. It wasn't part of the Black River.
Let's see.
Okay. Just so I know, when we're looking at the priorities that they set forward, I just was clarifying that this was additional. In addition to whatever Black River.
Plumbing, mechanical, now, roof speed mechanics?
Yeah.
So one kind of big picture thing that I was kind of surprised at was the, sort of the square footage per student. So Stockbridge, with their addition, their square footage per... Well, before addition was 151, and after was 180. And I'm curious what other, despite what the old regulations say, what other schools are standard per student? Because they have the Rochester, I mean, it's different because the elementary and the high school, but after was 317 square feet per student? So the public sees this, like, that's a big difference. Is there any way to reconfigure?
Just so I can be on the same page as you, like, it's the first page in the existing square footage, it says 151 row square foot. I see, okay, for Stockbridge.
Page three and then page six, it doesn't tell you what it is?
231 for per student in Rochester.
Yeah, you know. Well, it doesn't...
What kicks it?
I had calculated the, so the proposed area down at the bottom, they have 29, 189 on page six.
Yep.
And so if you divide that by 92 students.
92 kids.
So is there any way to reconfigure, like, there's some spaces that, I don't remember what they were, but were bigger than what we might need? That didn't seem like they looked into, is there anything that can be moved around?
Are you talking about in Rochester or in Stockbridge?
Right, in Rochester.
Jenny, just refresh my memory, because I don't recall, does that square footage for Rochester include the gym?
I think it does, yes.
See, I think that's what kicks it up for Rochester, that's a lot of space, but it's not instructional, it's not...
And one thing that was different...
The library and then we can't...
So the Stockbridge, their requirement for multipurpose room, because it's not called a gym, it's called multipurpose room.
Right, they have a lunch in there.
They have 1,200 square feet, they said under 60 students, it needs 1,200 feet for, so line item 10 on Rochester is called gymnasium, so they have a different requirement, so it shows a difference.
Exactly, and the way that it's being used in Rochester now, I mean, it doesn't look like that because it's a gym, but it's being used the same way you use yours, as a multipurpose room. We eat lunch in there, there's phys ed in there.
So it is a usable space within the school.
It's usable.
Yeah. So, sorry, Jenny, can you just say your...
It didn't seem like they looked at reconfiguring anything, it's just, what can we add on? Like, they talked about the locker room, I mean, it is for the emergency, but that's a town thing. Like, if we're adding space because we need a locker room, that should be the town's, you know?
Right, you were looking for maybe how we could reconfigure some of the existing spaces that we have to provide more space in a different way.
Right, I don't, I mean, it's the way they did it, so if they have the red there, it actually means that there's more space than needed, which to me should be the opposite, but just the way that they did it.
Is there enough storage in Rochester Elementary School to make art in the multipurpose room?
Like we do.
So the... Well, as the...
I think we should be looking at maybe reconfiguring.
22 general storage for Rochester.
Just thinking of other ways we use our multipurpose room.
It says they have 900 square feet, but they only need 184. But I know, I think Stockbridge said that they needed some space, so that could be one.
Yeah, we've got special items going up the hallway.
I mean, some of it, you might not be able to, you know, Emma's little hallway there, you can't bring that over to Rochester every day, but I'm sure there's some stuff.
Right, some storage stuff. But I was just even thinking, you know, you were comparing the gym, like, off the top of my head, we also use a multipurpose room for art and music. How do we make art in the gym?
But we've, but identifying, haven't we identified in Stockbridge that that's not really the ideal way to teach gym, art, and music in the one room altogether?
I mean, she goes into, so, I'm gonna say for music, it's not ideal, which is why I wouldn't put music in that branch, or trying to put it into the gym.
Right, and at the same time, you have to schedule to make sure that they're out of there by the time, early enough so that they can get lunch set up in there, that stuff's cleaned up, that you can't have art, you can't have the second graders going to art and the third graders going to gym, because it's in the same space.
Right, but art and, I don't know, art and gym on a different day.
Is this kids passing through while special ed is being done in the hallway?
So I guess, I think we've not, I thought we had identified that that was not really the ideal way to teach those classes, so rather than bringing that to Rochester, I'd rather change that stock.
Yeah.
Wait, 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 one conversation, please, one conversation.
So I would say it's not ideal, but I would never put music in that lunch space. I mean, it is better now that we have acoustic panels, but it's still not ideal. I would say it's not impossible.
Correct.
It's not ideal, yes, we want ideal, but if we're looking for cost savings, I think we have to be creative. And I think, to me, one way to be creative is art is not that terrible on a cart. So young kids, do we put our K1 or our preschool in the multipurpose room for art? No, she goes to them. Older kids, it just depends on what project they're doing, it just depends on activity. The way art, now, our table situation's a little different in the multipurpose room in that they can become benches and a workspace pretty easily. I don't think it's impossible to do, is it ideal? Would I like our art teacher to have an art room? Absolutely, but I think if we're trying to, I can't imagine having to bundle up kids to walk to a different space for art, which is what's happening right now in Rochester.
Oh, but happy end.
Yeah, we have to go into another building. I think an interesting thing to look at in Rochester, and we'd have to, you know, spend a little money at this, obviously, the gymnasium we have there now is close to a full-size high school gymnasium, not exactly, people tell me, but pretty close. It would be interesting to look at, okay, how much of that do we need to have a quality phys ed program? And then how much of it could be redesigned with petitions and ceilings? I mean, obviously, you'd have to do some soundproofing because you're right next door to a gym, but how could we make that space more usable for either a library, an art room?
Right.
So there we go. Well, let's pull back a bit, and do we, having been crammed into the elementary school building, do we see, do we think that that's still the best place to be, or do we wanna be in the high school building? I mean, again, we said, well, we thought it'd be, when we made that decision that we were gonna be in the elementary school building, we said, oh, it's gonna be really, really tight, but we're gonna save so much money by basically closing off that building. So that's gonna be the more efficient place to be. Do we say, well, we've got, the only thing we don't have in the high school building is a kitchen? But, you know, is that a better space to be in, you know, educationally?
And they did say that they would get...
You don't have a gym in there, right? No, but you've got a large, you've got the big commons, that big commons, because you don't have, you know, high school kids doing that, and we're trying to get our kids outside more anyways.
And we're trying to expand our preschool program to...
It's not there anymore. So, you know, the blank feature, I don't remember what it says in the report, but I remember their presentation would say that they wouldn't need an addition, that they could, I don't know where it would be, but fit the kitchen shop.
Right.
They talked about taking the shop and the classroom shop.
And making that a kitchen.
And make that the kitchen. Well, just looking at those two buildings and how much work needs to be done in either building to...
To maintain.
To maintain, but to, you know, the boilers and everything. From what I read, I thought that the, my impression was that the high school was gonna need it less than the elementary school did.
Yeah.
I thought so as well.
Yeah, because the piece that's, my understanding, and I'm more active Vermont Roofing business today, but I'm trying to think long-term, my understanding is that the roofing needs at the high school, I'm not certain of this, I'm just thinking, are, in terms of replacement, are less than the roofing, would cost less than replacing the roof at the elementary school. And it sounds to me like both either building is gonna have to have a new roof at some point, they're both way...
Right, and I mean, just the heating system.
Well, that's what I was saying, elementary is like, ready to go.
Yeah, right, it's ready to be...
That, you know, we don't wanna be in the middle of the school year and suddenly have the heating system go, that's talking weeks.
Steam distribution piping has risen over the building in the 60s.
Dangerous.
The hot water system filled with glycol, the system appears to have become corrosive. The hot water system needs to be flushed or replenished.
I mean...
And that's a disaster.
I mean, here's a basic thing, if Carl's talking like, maybe we need to do this just to make the elementary school usable? Because I mean, I think we're talking, we're dealing a little bit of a ticking bomb of costs, of potential breakdowns in costs in the elementary, the Rochester Elementary building.
Do they have a table somewhere in the report that summarizes their notes?
We got it, we got it, I just don't know...
I don't know if it's summarized, I actually skipped over all the tables and went to all the, just the written, because that was the information I really wanted to suggest.
It's like everything's in the table, but they don't have a summary.
Well, there is a summary, yes, there is a summary for, so, well, it's a written summary, it's broken down by...
Co-proficiencies.
Yeah, it's, okay, so...
Operational system deficiencies.
Page 31 is the civil assessment. And so that gives, talks about general site description, circulation, parking, sidewalks, on...
But they don't have like a summary somewhere, like, total, if you wanna do this.
Well, I feel like we saw that.
He does the presentation, and he says it in each individual, right, but they should have a summary.
There's no one sheet that says who's...
Oh, we could, I mean, we could pull these, can we pull these pages out, maybe we could not.
I think they should add...
But, because we need to probably do some hard numbers of, you know, they're talking the stuff that has to be done. And we have to, that's, but today, if we get done, that would, I would like to walk out of here knowing exactly what we need to spend money on, and whether we should really, right now, be saying, we need to move to the high school for this year, because the elementary's about to break down.
I don't think, I don't think...
Well, but that heater, the way that we're talking about that heater system.
Well, if we had to do it in emergency, we'd have to do it, we'd have to move to the high school.
But that's, yeah, okay, but I mean, wouldn't it be nice to have a plan for that?
It would be nice to have a plan.
So that we're ready for it, because we gotta heat, it sounded to me certainly that the heating system is really...
Well, let me back up a little bit, I have this sketch of a plan in my office, because unbeknownst to me, I guess unbeknownst to the board, the system has been operating without a backup circulation pump for like, three years, because...
Which system, elementary or high school?
The heating system in the elementary building, because it was like a $7200 fix or something like that. I said, we've gotta get a backup circulation pump, because if the other circulation pump goes, even if the boiler's still fine, we're out of business, we can't circulate our water. So they put that in. I understand the boiler is old.
And it cost 7200, or was it cheaper?
No, it was pretty expensive, 68, 7200. And so I don't, I can't say for certain, Ethan, but I don't see anything different about the heating system. In fact, it's slightly better with a backup pump in. So I think it's probably too late to try and move into the high school, unless we were doing an under a half to situation. So I have this little plan sketch.
But it wouldn't be good to have a plan.
I have it sketched out of who would go where and what would happen.
Shouldn't we also have a plan of how, what would we take to put the high school in operation in a short period of time? Because you could lose a week or a week and a half of instructional...
That's what I'm saying.
I don't mean just the where classes are gonna go, I'm talking about who do we call and what do they do.
Actually, the first thing on my list is call Bruce Labs. But I do.
I'm gonna be a lot of help and fix it.
But I do, but I have like, call PTO, call community members, because we have the little desks and chairs. And I think that's what we're talking about here, is do we want to put, are we talking about looking towards that high school? Because that really seems like there's more space and more opportunities to bring in expanded pre-K, to bring in more things, rather than trying to limit our space in the elementary school, so therefore, we should put the resources towards that high school.
But you get the political aspect of that, that when we talked about that with the unification, Stockbridge just went, whoa, 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 why do you get their high school?
You're gonna grand plan.
So I think it has to be part of a bigger plan to mix and...
I don't remember what the actual cost is side by side, because they don't have a summary, which I think they should have, but at the presentation, it kind of seemed like it was a washout. I mean, you're, either way, you're still gonna pay a lot of money.
And that's what I remember them saying, Jenny, because one of the consultants said to me, you know, if it's pretty even, would you consider going to the high school? Because for the money you're spending, you're getting more space.
And you're getting, yeah.
Different kinds of space.
They don't go into, that they kind of put a red flag with the flood mitigation.
Right.
I don't, it doesn't seem like it would be a huge...
Right, there was, you just have to bring someone into that area. For that, which, with the courtyard area, to just re-grading there, to fix that.
And if all of it is actually great, it's not a...
And also, also for actual... You had the slot bowl. Also for, like, Irene and flooding that came up into that lower part, they did have some pretty simple mitigations that we could do, like retaining wall and stuff like that.
I just feel like we could sell the move to the high school so much better, and it would also unify this whole district, which is still essentially not unified in a lot of ways, if it was part of a bigger plan. Like we're saying, we're mixing the schools, Fifth and Sixth are, Stockbridge, somebody else is here, you know, that it's, we sell them at a whole package where everybody's getting something, and it's not just Rochester's getting something, Stockbridge is still not getting something.
I can't speak for the public, but I think that, I think for some people, I think adding in addition to the elementary would be a harder sell than moving to the high school.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, no. I mean, if there's any building that has to happen, if we're gonna do it, it seems to me it has to be in Stockbridge.
Yeah, and one of the proposals was tear down the Rochester Elementary building, leave the gym and the cafeteria a freestanding, I guess it's a charge, any freestanding building.
Yeah, because the boiler's right behind there.
Yeah, and so that, kind of that section right there is the cafeteria, the heating mechanisms, and the gym. And put the money into the high school building. It costs a lot to raise a building.
Yeah, to take it down.
I know, it also costs a lot to keep it up.
Right. There are other questions, it's one-time cost to take it down, it's a long-term cost.
But I think we'd only do that if we offered it to the town, and the town said, no, we don't want it. Because there are some, there are some town government bodies that are turning down the school's offer, because they, to be frank, they don't wanna bear the cost of either raising it or maintaining it either, if they don't have a particular reason for it.
Wouldn't the elementary school lend itself more if we kept it or pretended to renting out that space?
I think that's a better...
Space, probably, I would think.
Or they'd stop it, or pre-K center, they're over there. But it's certainly much more conducive for us to raise money from that building than the high school building.
Because the high school has complete access once you walk in that first set of doors. The elementary building has exterior doors on some of the, not all of it, some of the areas.
You have to worry about visitors and finger...
In the elementary school.
And all that kind of thing.
So the high school doesn't have those doors?
Just meaning the plan of safety.
They do on the backside, but it's not immediate, you have to get all the way around the building to see them.
If we're going to be using the gym, and there's going to be businesses down the hallway, that's...
And they might...
Well, you would, I, I would think that you would just not use the gym.
And they might not want to rent if there's a gym right next door.
Well, I think we would need a real, what the real rules are about how close in proximity to a school, or a school building, um, different types of industry could be. The, um, there's a school in, um, New Hampshire that I went to, my niece's school, and their police station is in the parking lot.
Of the school?
Of the school, in the parking lot, of the school. It is, it is closer than the elementary school to the high school, and that is their police station.
See, one of the...
What are the, are real rules on it? What's, what's the real regulations?
One of the unfortunate fortunate situations is, um, your community structures have such good infrastructure. You know, Rochester, they have a town clerk's office, they have...
They are looking for something new there.
They are.
They, they have to either put a lot of money into that building, or that we need to move.
The board should, the board should be talking to them, because what many towns are doing is they're, they are buying the elementary school for the dollar, they're accessing the act forty-six process, and they're moving their town offices.
Yep.
Some towns that don't have a library, they're, they designated space for a library in a senior center.
Yep.
Now, we have a senior center and a library.
We have like, the historical society.
And now we have a fitness club.
Yeah.
No, I know.
But they're looking for space.
Historical society is looking for both display and storage space.
That's another reason to talk with the town.
But as I say, this is, it seems like this, I think we're, we get in trouble if we start piecemealing it, making these decisions without a vision, a vision for the whole thing. It just feels like, you know, to, for us to suddenly say, oh, we, we got to go to the high school. Um, I don't know, it feels like, I see Stockbridge being left out very clearly, whereas I think it's such a great, you know, this idea of how we would play around with the ages and where people are going, is so exciting and different and, and expansive, and as Carl said, using our, you know, using our facilities, using our resources, as opposed to saying, give us five million dollars to build all new stuff, you know, I, I just think it's, but it's a challenge.
Do you think parents would be on board with moving different grades to different schools? I'm just, I, I'm concerned with that is...
We'd have to sell it to them, but I think it's a lot more of a unified...
My concern is, Bramble and Hancock are a lot further from Stockbridge than...
True, but I think we have to plan for the kids we got. I think we have to plan for the kids we forgot.
I think you have to...
That's my concern.
I think, I, I think if you want to do that quickly, then there'd be resistance, but I think if you start to get people prepared for theme, like I was saying, thematic units for working together, classes are going on field trips together.
Which we should.
Down the road, down the road, it will be...
That's a, that's a vision system, that's why we need a five-year plan.
But you know what helps to, you know what helps, let me back up a little bit, I wish I'd grabbed it, we're, we're just finishing up a five-year plan in, where's that place I live, Rutland Northeast. The board, as a board, we took some of these, I call them lightly, I call them lightly outlined circles, so we took some stuff like this, so we took, um, I'm going to make a little, I wish it were lighter, so we took pre-K, all-day pre-K for all, and then we put, and then we took, um, then we took second language, and then we took facilities costs. And I forget, I forget what the other boards were. And that's all we took to the communities. Then each board member, because we, like I said, we had seven towns, so there's like fifteen of us, each board member went back to their towns. In this plan you're asking about, Ethan, they had the community help them flush this out. Now, you got to be a pretty skilled facilitator, because five or six people are going to show up in every town saying, this is the worst idea, we don't want anything different in Rochester, we don't want anything different, and you got to take those ideas and say thank you, and then move on to the other people who also want to give you a...
And listen to the people who are innovative.
But they helped us over a period of two years flush out this grand design.
And I think two years is a key time you put it in.
Yeah, and I'll grab that five-year plan and get it to Cross, and one to Bruce, so they can get it out to everybody. But I don't, I think we have to have a little bit better sense of where we're going than we do right now.
Yeah.
But I don't think this has to, in fact, I think there's a benefit to not having it look like, well, they've already made up their mind with it.
No, 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 I agree with you, I agree with you. But I, but I think we have to be on board with, I mean, I think the idea of splitting up the grades between the two campuses is a big thing that we would all have to get on board with, to put out there, even if we put it out there for them to talk about.
Because one of the things that became apparent when we took this out to people, we had another sheet, we had a second sheet, would be that providing additional opportunities for our kiddos at a cost we can afford. So, for example, if, let's just say we put all our fifth, sixth graders together, it might save a teaching position, which might free up seventy-seven, I don't know, what's the average cost, seventy, seventy-five, when you get salary and insurance and all that in?
Ninety.
Ninety, whatever.
I don't know, it's off the top of my head.
Okay, but it's a fair amount of money, right? And that started to find its way into the discussion about, okay, we can take that ninety-thousand dollars and we can have a full-fledged second language program in both schools, not just an enrichment, a few, you know, a few hours a week. And, and...
Well, I, then that's, then I would say, then the, let's do it that way, but I feel like we need, we still don't have a process looking forward. And I think Carl's thing of, where's the five-year cutoff, you know, four years from now, whatever it is, where, what Stockbridge can say, we're done, or reevaluate. What's our plan for how we're moving forward? Clearly, academically, I think we're doing pretty well with it, you know, in terms of what we're doing.
The steps we're going to take.
Yeah, the steps we're going to take for that. But as far as facilities, I, I just, we don't have a plan still. You know, we're just getting this information, we know we've got these things, but I think, what are the pieces that we want to take to community? Because I think you're, I think we're pretty close to that, to say...
Well, I would break community into two categories, two...
Taxpayers and parents.
Well, I, I do think we need to get more parents' feedback of, you know, kids whose families this is going to affect.
Yeah.
At the greatest, I mean, there's the financial effect to everyone, obviously, but then there's the like, this is going to be a change for a kid, changes for, you know, potentially.
How do we get those...
Change cameras.
Send the survey home with the packet.
I think a survey, I think it would be good to, to try to figure out where our communities are in terms of how they're feeling about their school and the future of it.
So is it time for another questionnaire?
I, I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea.
I think it's, I think it would be good to do it...
We should have a good introduction with some of the things that we are talking about, what we see we want, and what we're, this is the thing, type of things that we want. We want to see foreign language, we want to see all-day preschool.
One is the same, you guys think?
Are we finishing Megan, sorry, what's that?
Well, I guess my concern is, I just don't want to make any big decisions on combining classes and grades if in four or five years, you know, we come to a point where, you know, the community of Stockbridge, I would think more so would just prefer to close a school and have full choice. Like, that's my concern about rearranging everything, in the long run, what does each of our communities feel like we can maintain, afford, and want?
But that's why I think, first of, I, I think change is anxiety-producing, and we need to look at it, and I think the two things that we're looking at is, number one, a transition. So you do take it over two years, and number two, to have, to have the community feel as they should, that they have a piece in this. So if we dictate, then it's going to be over. If we do this, what Bonnie is saying, they're going to come, because they, the bottom one is, we don't care about the kids. I think if we do this the right way, they themselves, the community themselves, will come to the conclusion, as your group did, hey, we got to do something here, this makes it better, this saves us money, and I think we can transition everyone to that situation. If we do it quickly, no.
Oh, yeah, no.
And I'm not sure the survey shouldn't come out after a meeting, because I think maybe, let's give our people the background knowledge that they need...
But we haven't presented a concession hearing report. That's the next meeting that we've talked about, right, is to present this.
Right, and then a survey, but what, give them, empower them with the knowledge to answer it appropriately.
And the other thing I'm going to suggest we do is, because I, I can tell you with certainty, right after this meeting, right after the first time that it gets televised, some of us are going to get calls about, why did you make this decision, when we haven't made a single decision yet? So one of the things we did is we had a very visible online page for the board, and basically the chair put the first thing up about, you know, understand that everything will be posted here, every decision the board makes will appear here shortly after the decision's made. If you hear about a decision about which you're disturbed, please call the superintendent's office.
Not that forum that you were talking about one time with...
To make sure it's been made. And so we were, the board was very, very visible very early on about things, and basically we were saying, unless you hear it from us, don't believe it.
Can, Bruce, can this IT person for us, I mean, do they do webpage stuff?
Sure.
Yeah, so we could tell them, we want to revamp our webpage, and we want to have this...
Want it to stay current.
We want it to stay current, we want it updated, we want, and then he can ask us for, okay, give us some photographs and...
Providing us?
That's what I'm just saying. I didn't know, I thought we were going to have to hire our contractor.
No, I, I thought we had at one point. He is, he is, he is good enough to, to give him a problem like this, to solve.
We, we have a communications, we have a communications issue, we need really good websites for our website for our two schools, because I think it should be one for both.
I like, I like this idea a lot that Bonnie's saying, especially with this whole tax thing that went around, and this is a place...
We had a way to communicate.
This is a place for the public to go to get a, an update, an answer, the most current information, and we have to be diligent about posting the most current, so that, as she said, as soon as the decision is made, within a day, it'll be, it'll be put up there.
Right, well, and, and again, because, for example, the, the, when I brought up the idea of moving the five, six out, it was actually just for the functional, if you don't want to put a million dollars into putting an expansion on Stockbridge, the only other way you can make some room is to get rid of grades, you know, get rid of the oldest kids, because they're the ones that are, you know, old enough and mature enough to be able to, to, to be bussed.
Right.
Um, you know, and that's, it's, it's not at all, it wasn't at all brought up as an educational solution, it was brought up as a, you know, putting, putting that kind of question out to the community and saying, yeah, the, the space utilization in Stockbridge is unacceptable.
Yeah.
We can't teach special education in a damn hall. That's not fair to the kid, that's not fair to, you know, to have to kick the principal out of our office when, when they need a nurse, a private nurses' visit.
Yeah.
You know, that doesn't work. So we need to fix that, and then either we have to expand, or we have to reduce the grades we're offering in that facility. Those are the two of them. It's very clear. It's also a good argument for the people there, because it's like, here's your school, here's the situation, you choose, what would you do?
And we just need to move the kids. I think we need to be able to, in our meeting, we'd be, we need to be able to say, here are some of the obvious questions like that one, and then be able to back that up and say, well, it's, you know, this would mean it would work like this, if we did this, if we, if we went to fifth and sixth grade, here's the advantage, that there would be, you know, there'd be a bigger peer grouping, um, you know, these kids are capable of traveling on bus, so we talk, be able to spell that out versus the spelling out the, if we have, if we bonded it like this.
How much would it cost? Right, and, and the uncertainty of the population in the future, and the fluctuations of it. The other thing that's, we're, the advantage that we have is that our preschoolers have their one class, that is a Rochester campus and a Stockbridge campus class, and they know each other so well right now. Bonnie was saying that the preschoolers would come to, to the Rochester campus, and they were comfortable, they knew the classroom because they've been there so much.
I would say K one does that as well.
K one, okay.
Yep.
And so this is the group that's going to be our next four or five years, so by the time that, you know...
The third and fourth grade are going to really be unified.
The other thing I'm going to say that we learned very early on is change for kids is nowhere near as problematic to change for adults.
Yeah, absolutely, I was going to say, they like it, they like it.
If you guys could hear some of the stories that your own seventh and eighth graders have come back with.
Jody, Jody and Wilder, this is incredible, yeah.
When are we, I mean, when are, when are we going to see our Rochester friends again? I can't tell you how many times I came out of younger kids now.
The other thing you could think about that we did, and it worked for us, and, um, we didn't do this in Rutland Northeast, we did it out in Bridgeport, is we had a series of meetings, we had these surveys, we did all that, all working toward March, and on the March ballot, we put four or five non-binding questions. And, because that's the only time you're sure you're going to get a good read from the community. Surveys, a certain group will answer, a certain group won't answer. Parent letters, a certain group will answer.
You meant ballot, was that, uh...
The March, no, no, the March, when the town, when the town board. And the questions were something like, if we could increase opportunities for your students, would you send your sixth graders to Middlebury Union Middle School? If we could, blah, 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 would you? And those questions came out of the, of the meetings and the presentations that the board had done throughout the year, and they generated these four or five questions that they put on as non-binding, um, questions on the ballot, and got some surprising input. It was surprising.
Is Rochester a paper ballot at their town meeting?
No, yeah, no, none of them are.
Okay.
It's all together, uh...
Town meeting, not school.
No, town meeting is...
No, town meeting is, is, uh...
Australian.
Are you just an Australian for your town meeting?
No, that was a school budget. No, maybe with certain, certain things, you're right, certain things.
No, no, no.
No, the school budget, you do it at your annual meeting.
I say town, town.
Yeah, town is not Australian budget, you vote for it in the...
No, we're, we're Australian, both, we are Australian.
Both town and school, yeah, or, but we're school now.
No, not, not...
Not school anymore.
They're on the floor.
Yeah, we're on the floor.
On the floor, not Australia.
Australian ballot is paper and pencil.
Right.
On the floor.
All right, for some reason I flipped that around in my head, sorry. Ignore me, Australia, we are not Australian. We're not Australian.
I was just asking, because I think on this ballot, when it's paper and pencil, I think you get very honest answers.
Yes.
When it's from the floor, I think people go with the majority.
They do, that's true. I didn't realize nobody was Australian.
Just based on some feedback I got, just from our annual...
No, but you, you could hand out, um, something at the meeting, at the door, that people could...
But even then, even though, yeah, it's like, it is, it is the thing, I mean, how do we get these other people to the meetings? How do we get, how are we having a meeting like this? I mean, if parents heard this kind of meeting, like what we talked about in the first hour, parents would be thrilled. They'd be thrilled to hear us talking about that kind of stuff, because they'd hear that this is where we're working toward, this is where we're engaged in, but we can't get those people to the meeting.
Okay, so when, when we were in poverty schools, you don't get parents to come.
You have to go.
They don't want to hear the things that they're going to be told, and they're working for jobs.
Yeah.
And the only way we got parents to school was to feed them, and to have their children do some, at some reading activity, and they could see what their kids were doing.
Theater, people come to theater, concerts, too.
But I'm talking about parent night, where, what you said, Ethan, where a teacher gets up and says, this is what we're going to do this year, let me show you reading groups that we're doing, let me show you how the reading program works, let me show you the
let me show you how the reading program works, let me show you the math program. So, they're watching their students. Parents will come to watch their students. And then we had a dinner, and parents will come for food. And if we had to, we went out and we took the parents in our cars, and we brought them, and there were things all over, and a critical thing is, we just didn't have the bright kids. We had those kids who were struggling perform, because we wanted the parents to see that they're successful. Those kids, the other kids always perform. We wanted the bulk of our population to show our parents what we were doing.
So, to be even more specific to that, there's this thing that's called Full Service School Model. It was done in Bennington at Molly Stark Elementary, and my mother-in-law actually helped with it. That's a little weird to call it that.
I was gonna say, how's that, how's that gonna work?
That good.
Just new.
Just crack it off.
Don't forget you're on TV.
I know, yeah.
I'm sending this to Bennington.
She would say the same thing. But, um, she gave me the book, which explains the whole process that she and the principal went through together, because she did early at, like, a Head Start program, that's what her background is. So, one of the things she and I were talking about, I said, how do you get the parents that don't show up? And she said, feed them, but you feed at the end of the month, when people, like, there's a whole chart of how to get people out, and what communities they, she and this other principal, Sue McGuire, knew. They just, they went with meals to the homes to get parent and community feedback, because those were the areas that just want to come out.
Yep. See, that's the other piece. We can't just worry about getting parents out. We have to get people who don't have kids, for these kinds of questions, like, what do we do about our buildings or our facilities? That's a whole, we're interested in the whole community's input. So, we have to figure out ways to get to those folks who don't have a child connection.
I know, let's just have a tax problem every two months.
No.
Show up for those, and that's fine. We actually want to talk to you about that.
It's the parents that are not coming. The tax people, the meeting the other night, where...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but I think it's also...
Those are the people without kids.
We see you, Mason, we see you.
His parents need to as well get out and talk to all the parents.
Okay, but that was like 20 people, Janie, right, or 25 people? But there's far more community members in our two communities than 25. Mason.
The whole technology here, you guys haven't incorporated into communicating with the parents just now. I heard all this getting, trying to get the parents there, but there's this whole technology where they can feel obligated to actually participate in a home setting with you, even if it's a teacher communicating about the class directly to those parents. So, there's a whole technology you guys can look at here.
If we had somebody editing the school board meeting videos, or this video, because, you know, you don't want to ask him to sit through an hour, two hour, three hour. But if you had them editing it so that it was part of this webpage, so that they could see and hear our sound bites, you know, that's...
You have to remember, though, the same, people who don't show up don't necessarily have access to technology.
Well, but, but we need to get Blackboard. We gotta be included, we have to include it as one of the options. I think that's what you're saying.
We need to use Blackboard to invite them.
And I don't want to spend anybody's money foolishly.
The RoboCop.
But we actually hired a communications person over there to help us generate, just like Mason said, ideas for how the board could communicate about this five-year plan that we developed.
Well, it's also for the teachers to communicate to their parents.
And she actually came up with some ideas that nobody else had even thought of, because that's her area of expertise.
We're in action issues.
Okay, because we really made a lot of progress on that building.
But maybe this, but this is more action items, so to speak, like repairs.
What are we spending money on?
We gotta get a couple of the things up there. We gotta get, we gotta get fire alarm panels.
Well, we have to do, we need to, we need to, I think, one of the things we need to do is, we need to go through and say, because the, all the reports are, here's the priority one things. These are the things that have to be fixed because they're code.
Rochester High School, chemical priority item number one, inspect underground oil tank. Test and inspect all ventilation equipment, confirm that equipment is...
This is what building are you...
This is Rochester High School.
I don't think you have to rewrite this, Lindy, because we've got it, maybe, I mean, if you want, but we've got it.
We just have to decide which ones we're doing.
Right, right, so what is, I mean, in short term?
Would it be good to go through building by building and read the priority items?
Yeah, let's do that.
Should we start?
Let's start with all the priority ones, that, that those are supposed to be in short terms, right?
Yeah, can I ask you a simple question? The priority ones, wouldn't, aren't, aren't you just planning on us doing those? Because those are high priority things.
Some of them are. No, but, they're not all...
Urgent things.
I was gonna say, they're not all urgent, are they? Some of them are, well, it'd be nice to, isn't it?
I'm looking at, well, there's code deficiencies.
I mean, like, we're not gonna add a number...
According to them, priority one is in that quote, code violation or conditions which appear to propose an immediate hazard to, to, or life safety.
So, page 41, code deficiencies for Stockbridge are heating system, ventilation system, and control. Oh, no, no control.
Right, so we should, we should, but what I'm saying is, this is the money that we're... If we're saying we're doing all this priority one, this is the money that we're spending, and it's in the neighborhood.
It's a little confusing here, sorry. Mechanical priority number one, this is 41, inspect underground oil tank, verify tank is not leaking. This is for Stockbridge School. Mechanical priority, priority item number two.
Right, but what's the dollar figure to that?
Uh, first one is $10,000 to $15,000.
So, let's call it 15.
Where are we?
This is inspect underground oil tank.
So, that's 15 plus?
Uh, 15, mechanical priority number two item, replace warm air furnace.
Well, just do, do the three priority ones, so it's $15,000 for the, for mechanical.
I see what you're saying, yeah, 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 yeah. So then, plumbing priority, none noted.
What about the lead? What about the lead thing, that, that the state has mandated?
Well, that's not on this report.
Well, I know, but that's the reality.
Here's electrical priority number one, is provide emergency out lighting within the building, replacing central battery equipment.
So, I'm like...
That's 3, $3,500 to $4,500.
No, that's $8,500 to $12,000.
No, electrical priority number one item, page 43.
$8,500 to $12,000.
Page 39, it's 8,500 to $12,000.
I have Stockbridge, I, here I have...
Priority number one?
Electrical priority number one is provide emergency lighting.
And to relocate this meter and bus plug-in, that's another one of those.
Yeah, that's 40, page 43, that's what I'm looking at.
It's weirdly, why, where's your...
Electrical priority number...
Okay, so if you add the two of them together, because there's a priority A and a priority B. I'm on the front of the summary page, that's where I was.
So, you do have the summary page?
I do, I do, it's on the, it's page 39, that, it, it doesn't give us, 39?
Wait, Janie, do you have printing capability here?
Yes.
Didn't he bring a copy of this?
No, the summary, the summary.
It's on page 39.
I know.
Right, but it's, it's on, the difference is that when you're looking at the PDF, it's page 40-something. If you look at the bottom of the PDF, it's actual physical page 39, because they start numbering after the cover.
Okay, and I think...
But yeah, 10, 15 for mechanical, and it's 12, so 27, 27,000 is the, is the Stockbridge priority ones, right? 12,000 for electrical, 15,000 for plumbing.
Reading through, what needs to make sure?
Hold on a minute, let's ask Janie, can we ask Janie to make a copy so we're reading the same document? Is that this document?
This page 39.
Well, that's Stockbridge.
That's just Stockbridge, yeah, we've got three, we'll have three summaries. So, page 39, page 39, then the Rochester one is...
And then we're all looking at the same document.
Rochester one, this here is page 40, 45.
Yeah, page 45.
So, 39, 45, and then the elementary. I'm gonna beat you to it.
We don't have, only...
The elementary, you have to look at that second, that second email.
It's right here, it's right here, it's page 14. Oh, actually, so 80, 98.
I don't need it, I have it.
Yeah.
I need it.
Okay, copies?
This is on the electrical.
Just let me make sure I'm doing the right one, so...
There's one more.
Here's plumbing priority.
I was hoping I had silver. We need to register elementary.
Well, you have it in this...
I have Stockbridge Elementary, I have executive summary, should I have something else?
Oh, do you want 45, yeah, there? Here, I'll give you 45.
Let me just cut and paste them, into a separate page, because then...
All right, just let me tell you what I have. I have Rochester High School executive summary, and Stockbridge Elementary, those are...
It's Rochester Elementary School in the back? It is the executive summary back. No, it's not in the back, it's, it's that tall one. It's the elementary school, that's right.
The tall one?
Well, it's a vertical rather than horizontal.
It's a portrait.
Aren't you told where you're born, the tall one? Okay, so this one?
That's Rochester.
Should I do the, I don't have to do the back of that, no?
No, just the front.
So, it's 27,000, if I, if I add the, the electrical and the plumbing for Stockbridge, $27,000 is a priority one cost for Stockbridge.
Okay, I have a question, I have a, I have a, on priority one for all schools, it talks about replacing our batteries for our emergency on lighting. They said that they tested the, the emergency lighting, and they all, all the batteries worked, but they just didn't test it for the 90 minutes as provided by code. Can't we just test it for 90 minutes? First, before we replace all those batteries?
We have to go to our electrician.
They're waiting on top of that. I understand, we probably do need to replace the batteries, but why, I mean, they said they worked.
Right.
And it's just that they didn't, no, they didn't test it for 90 minutes, which is what code is, that they have to, the emergency lighting needs to be on for 90 minutes after.
Well, let's, let's, let's find, let's get all our priority list, number one items out. And then we can go back and look at each one, and see which ones are the ones that really do need to be done, and which ones are the ones we can...
Okay, go back. I thought we were doing it as we went, so that's fine.
Okay, so it's $27,000 is the listed, the listed total cost for Stockbridge.
For this one?
Right, well, $12,000 for that, so, it says the electrical is $12,000 total.
Okay, I'm with you now, thank you.
So, the, the, the whole thing, all priority one for Stockbridge is 27 grand.
And that's at the high side?
Yeah, and then all priority ones for the high school are $176,500. If you add those three things up, that's for the high school.
High school, well, thank you.
And then I didn't, I didn't add up the tall one.
And what are the three things, Carl, what are the three things that make up that 176?
Uh, they are...
Inspect the oil tank, right?
Uh, yeah, the, it's mechanical priority ones is 80,000, which is oil tank, ventilation equipment, dust collection for the shop.
Which we don't have to do, because we don't operate the shop as a shop.
Right, but it's just, it's what they, it's what they, I'm figuring, if we go by the high numbers...
It's good.
We're never gonna, we're never gonna spend more than this.
Right, true.
You know, so that, you know, and you also want to figure that, yeah, there, you know, half the time they open something up, or try to fix something, there's always the unforeseen, oh crap, that's asbestos.
And I read nothing that said we had to do that dust collection if we weren't operating it as a shop.
It did say if we were not operating it, we did not.
Okay, so we can pull that amount out, whatever.
Right, but it doesn't say what that, it doesn't tell us what that number is.
It does, it does.
So, hold on, let's just go through the, like we said before, let's just go through all the, and then I'll take things out. So, was there anything else?
I have the elementary.
The electrical systems, so the plumbing systems for the high school are reviewing the number of fixtures, and ADA, backflow protections, and mixing valves. Is the plumbing system at the high school, the electrical at the high school is all the distribution equipment, the emergency lighting, and the inside and out. And that's 1, and that's 176,500.
Say that again about electro, I got the emergency light, what was that?
Distribution panels, the, specifically the federal Pacific Electric panels.
Those are really old.
It's still in the 70s.
And then emergency.
And then emergency lighting.
Well, again, it's all five priorities, where are we putting our money?
And you said that was 176,500?
Health and safety first, total.
Yeah.
Yeah, elementary school.
Okay, we have first priority, mechanical priority item number one is $15,000, inspect underground oil tank. It's the same for Stockbridge.
Yes, we'll do, look at one contact.
Priority in the plumbing, priority number one, there's no cost to this. Review the number of plumbing fixtures in the gym for code compliance. So, gym code compliance, I guess we'll say.
All right, and a backflow protection.
Oh, that says three things here, so sorry, I need to add these in. Backflow and phimostatic mixing valve, that's for a total of 6,500.
Right.
You're plumbing right now?
Yeah, I'm on plumbing, I'm just about to go to electrical, we're just gonna...
Backflow, what was that, the backflow?
Backflow was...
Mixing valve.
Mixing valve, and the total cost was 6,500.
6,500?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I'm going to electrical, number one estimated priority, provide emergency lighting within building, replacing central battery equipment, this is 4,500.
Central battery equipment?
And so, that's a total of $26,000 for the Rochester Elementary School.
So, right now, the high school, what's the big one in the high school?
Ventilation, probably. The ventilation. But, it doesn't, they, all of the ventilations in all the buildings were not tested, so how can they say that they need new ventilation in the high school, but not in elementary or the, or Stockbridge? How is that a priority in the high school, when they couldn't test it?
It may just mean getting it up and operating, but that would be our good luck, that's all it meant. I think it, so we don't know, what is the problem with ventilation in the high school? Since they couldn't get it started, is it, is it shot, or is it just, there's a piece that's not working?
So, we need to know, so we need to assess, so that's the number one priority.
So, we need to assess the ventilation system.
And that's less than some of these other...
Ventilation syst, this is the high school, general, the existing ventilation systems are not operational, yeah? They're in trouble, so, concerns. Here's the concerns.
What page do you?
On, in the high school, it's going to be page 48.
What section?
The high school, under ventilation for...
What page, sorry?
48, top right-hand.
Come.
It says, air handling equipment is over 40 years old, the air handling units have exceeded their useful life and should be replaced. Existing air distribution ductwork systems should be professionally cleaned to maintain proper indoor air quality. Existing wood shop area does not have adequate dust collection system to control dust buildup.
Janie, here, I got these.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so the question there becomes, though that's a number one priority, does it need to stay a number one priority, given the limited use of the high school? We know it's a problem, we know it has to be addressed.
Do we know, it'd be nice to have a cost for how much it would be to fix, yes?
So, let me just, let me just then compare it to what they said about the element, Rochester Elementary School ventilation system. In general, the ventilation system in the buildings were found to be non-operational because the equipment is no longer serviceable and should be replaced. Original classroom areas were served by rooftop heating recovery unit, which includes ducted fresh air to each classroom, exhaust is ducted from the heat recovery unit. Each toilet room and over each classroom closet unit is installed as part of the 1990s project. So, there must be some type of ventilation going on, that it's just not a main, big system.
But then, we have an error in this column, don't we? Because we didn't put anything in this column about ventilation in the elementary school.
No, well, they, they, interestingly enough, when you look at the elementary rapport, it, like, it has $700,000 as a priority two.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure whether they just think that...
So, it must not be a code issue.
But if it is at the high school, why isn't it at the elementary?
I'm on the elementary school page three, where it says that the priority one items are $10,000 to $15,000, and that's the, the oil tanks, but priority two is replacing all ventilation system, and new boiler system and new controls. So, they say, you know, it's interesting, because their, their, their final cost for that, when you say the priority two, which is the non-immediate piece, is 700 to $10,000 to $900,000.
And it's just interesting to me that the non-immediate ventilation piece is in the building that we occupy fully, and the immediate ventilation piece is in the building that we barely occupy.
Right, that's all I'm, that's what's...
Yeah, no, and that's...
Oh, you know what, I think I have yours.
She has some copies coming in.
Okay, here's, here's...
Where are the extra copies?
I believe that that, that one is mine, and that one is mine, that you. I believe that's, that one has got hole punches in it, does it, oh, no, it doesn't have...
No, it's a copy.
So, it's, I'm missing a whole bunch.
I might have you all right.
They should have hole punch, actual hole punch.
Yeah, I realized that, I had, I must have...
Okay, so should we, so there should be no hole punches if it's...
No, she needs hers originals back that you took upstairs.
There's have hole punches.
I've got an executive.
I need, I need, gave you back.
Rochester High School?
No, but they have, they...
No, I need the other one, I need Stockbridge.
I've got an executive summary.
Whatever you want upstairs.
Yeah, but I mixed it all up.
No, you took my executive summary, that was here.
So, somebody may have some with hole punches, take a look, they look like they're hole punches, but they're just half moved. Look at yours in CD, you don't have it.
I do, I mean, I have, that's, is it this?
Did you leave it in the faculty?
All right, well, give me just another one, please, as long as everybody has one.
Do you have these?
Oh, yeah, wait, that's... Yeah. No, this is not the one I want, it's the Stockbridge one that I need. There we go. See, if you look up in the corner, it says what it is.
Yep. Well, it was super nice.
Okay, so, starting with the ventilation system is where we're at.
So, ventilation, so you're, and you're saying ventilation, I mean, I would agree with Bonnie right now, ventilation system, I would say, we're higher priority is new heating system for the elementary school than a new ventilation system for a high school. Wouldn't we say? Though, even though one is priority two...
Depends on which we're gonna occupy.
Yeah, exactly, and if we're, our goal right now going forward, I think we've established today, is we're gonna go ahead with the status quo for this year, at this point, except an emergency. We're gonna have an emergency plan, yes?
I said, yeah, I mean, we, so far, that's where we're at, but I think maybe looking at these may, it may change us.
Because I would say, if we're gonna spend $100,000, because right now, all these are, you know, right, Bonnie? I would say that most of these numbers, 15,000, 12,000, they're not break-the-bank kind of maintenance numbers.
I think we have like 56 or 57,000 budgeted in maintenance, we should...
Okay, so the big one would be, if we're gonna spend $100,000 on something, what do we spend it on? If we, you know, if there's some big-ticket items.
Well, we have a roof.
Well, we don't know how much that roof fixing is gonna cost.
I believe the elementary roof is in the vicinity of $200,000, so that's more like a bond issue. Oh, for fixing, no, I'm sorry, we're still trying to find out.
Okay, how much?
What's the extent of the fixing?
Got you.
Yeah, I know, I was like $200,000. So I guess I go back to, I don't know if it was Jenny's point or Jenny's point, but if they come back with a repair number of $132...
Yeah, then it's, what's the point?
What's the point?
But if they come back with a repair fix of $40,000 or $18,000 to $40,000...
That's much different.
Then we can work that in. So it's about priorities. Obviously, the buildings we're in right now, full time, should be the highest priority, yes?
Not necessarily. If, I mean, if you're looking forward, you definitely want it to be safe, and we want to make sure that everybody's safe, but, I mean, we're putting a large investment into a long-term fix of something, that we are not necessarily gonna be occupying.
Which of course gets back to the big picture thing of what is our vision for four years ago.
But I go back to this ventilation, because Stockbridge has a, has the same thing, a code deficiency. It says ventilation system, fresh air unit is not operating to provide required ventilation, but they don't put it, it's a code deficiency, but they don't put it as a priority too, that needs to be...
Not an immediate hazard or a life-threatening...
So I'm not sure if it's an immediate hazard in the Rochester Elementary building.
One of the things they said about Rochester, and I'm guessing it might be true about Stockbridge, is because of the conditions of our windows and this and that and everything else, there's probably enough fresh air coming in that isn't brought in by the system.
Right, right.
That may be why it's down at a, I mean, I think Amy's point is, is a good one. We wouldn't wanna make a financial decision on repairs that locks you into something, so that you feel we can't change this building. We just put $700,000 into these buildings.
Yeah, 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 and then we're locked in.
Exactly. So it's the safety issues, I mean, it's the safety issue.
And understanding, you know, what is, how much is that dust collection system? Because the mechanicals for the high school are $65 to $80 grand, and that's for the underground oil tank, and just testing and inspecting the ventilation system, and then installing the dust collector.
Which I don't think we have to do.
Right, that's right, we're not, we wouldn't be operating a shop, but, you know, that's...
Right, so here, the mechanical dust collection is $50,000 to $60,000.
Okay, so there you go, so we can take, we can take theoretically $50 grand off the high school repair.
$60, because we were growing on the high side.
Right.
So it's down to one, the high school, so it's $115.
$116,500, or $116,500. Okay, so here in the priority one for the high school, again, regard to the ventilation, it does say, estimate constraints, work would not be required if controls and equipment were replaced under priority two. Oh, I see.
Right.
So they do still, yeah.
They still, right, but now you're down to, it's, it's, I mean, the oil tank was $15 grand at every other place, so you've, you know, you've got $5,000 for ventilation inspection and $15 grand for an oil tank, right? Because you take $60 grand out of that top mechanical box.
It's still a hard sell that we're spending almost four times as much on a building that's hardly occupied.
Right, well, because the majority of that becomes the, I bet you when you look at, because the other big cost for the high school is the 78.5 for the, for the distribution panels and emergency lighting. And I bet you the majority of that is the distribution panels at the high school.
Right, which are operational right now.
So they're operational, but, yeah, we don't wanna be spending on that until we know long-term whether we're...
We're going into that.
Or into that building, or how.
Right, because, because that, it is functional, they just say that it is, it's obsolete. And it does need to be changed, but if we're not going into that building, there's no reason for us to change it.
Yeah, we did fine last winter, as far as all the buildings and stuff like that, right?
Let's see, I don't have any expertise in any of this, so I'm just gonna throw it out and see if it makes sense. I would, I would get the oil panels inspected.
Oil tanks.
Excuse me, the oil tanks inspected.
Yeah, safety.
I would get the roof repaired. I don't know that I'd do anything else in the high school, because the limited amount of time that we're in there and the close proximity to the front of the building. Jenny, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of this emergency lighting is if there's a heavy smoky fire and people have to figure out how to get out.
I would assume...
The art room is right there, right around the corner from the front door, and there's a door, exterior door, out of the art room. So I don't think we have...
As there is for the theater.
Yeah, now, the issue becomes public use of the facilities, non-school hours, but it seems like investing these kinds of sums in either building until we're certain...
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Good, good, good. At least now, thank God, we have the list.
I'm glad we have it, yeah.
We have the list that tells us where we're at.
And I guess my thought would be, if we're looking toward the future, there's only two, as I look towards the future in Rochester and Stockbridge, there's only two things that's gonna happen, that I can think of. Either both communities are gonna grow, and we're gonna need more space for kids, or both communities are gonna get small enough to the point where we're going to need to come together. Those are the two things I can see happening. If we come together, neither of our buildings are large enough to bring that school population under one roof. So it would seem to me somewhere in the future, we're going to be having to look at the high school for one reason or another.
The problem is, we just don't know when. We don't know if that's four years or...
So here's my question though, if, and I don't know if that's true, what I've just said, but if we decide that it's true, then we could begin to make significant repairs in a, in a time that we can afford them to the high school, move Rochester kids into the high school.
Expand our pre-K.
Expand our pre-K, maintain Stockbridge where it is until one of two things happen.
Well, hopefully solve the problem of space in some kind of way.
And start investing in the high school building versus putting much at all in a building that's going to be too small if one of those two things happen. And when I'm looking at this, and it's just the general thing, but Rochester High School, that overall this school is in as good as or better than any similar schools. Stockbridge is, this school is as fair as or better than similar schools. The elementary school is not, overall the school is in fair condition compared to similar schools. So obviously, the elementary's in the worst condition, Rochester elementary's in the worst condition. And I also think Rochester Elementary, I think you said this, Megan, Rochester Elementary, I think, is more conducive to rental space.
Yes.
Whether, whether the board did it as a financial, the town way, or the town does it. So in some ways, it just might be we have to push ourselves to say, do we have enough information to make a decision before we start putting a lot of money into any building?
My concern with, you know, down the road, once again, is in our, I believe our agreement, when we said we'd come back together, it would be left to the town to decide that they were gonna close the school.
Yep.
A school building?
A school, no, a school.
Well, Stockbridge to close.
And I just, I would, I just don't know where Stockbridge is, will be at that point, whether it's all go to Rochester or let's have choice, and that's where...
You're saying school choice versus combined?
Yeah, how are we gonna, if we've got four more years, four more years to convince them that they should be coming to Rochester.
All the projections are down with population. You know, there may be some blips here and there, but all the projections...
Statewide for young people and...
But I could see, you know...
For the next, for the next, until 2016.
I see that the, more of Carl's idea, that there's just less classes in Stockbridge, but that, again, gets to a tipping point of how many, how far down the line, I don't know, but if we're, you know, if there is a full preschool program in Stockbridge as well...
Well, I think the biggest thing that I found interesting personally was when we had that first initial presentation in Stockbridge where whatever her name was, Patty or Jenny or whoever the woman came from.
Polly, Polly.
Polly, yeah, and we talked about that, and one of the comments, you know, was that as she was going through, you know, saying, okay, well, Stockbridge, you know, you need this much, you need this much room, and we were saying, you know, we can't have special education in a hallway, we really should have a private nurses' space, blah, blah. The town, the pushback from Stockbridge residents saying, we got by, my kids were great in there, and, you know, my kids did it too, but it wasn't ideal necessarily. But the interesting thing was just the general resistance to the idea of if our populations are going down, why are we building additions? Why are we bonding out to build more space? And if you follow that logic, it means that the Rochester High School is where you end up, because that building, they can sit there and they can say, we could put all the Rochester kids in here, we can just make this part into a kitchen, and it won't be super expensive. The biggest thing is just that Rochester, you know, you're spending all that money on those electrical panels, because they're all not made and obsolete, and, you know, there may be some more significant roof gains down the line and window issues. But really, if you, if you look at it, that's the only building that everyone, that could be, could, everyone could fit in without, because the recommendation is you put in that, you spend that million dollars redoing the elementary, the Rochester Elementary heat system, and you put an addition on it. You know, so I think that, I think that just from what I think our communities would be supporting, saying that in Rochester, you're moving towards using the building that everyone fits in without putting an expansion on it, you know, is, is perhaps a direction that we might wanna try to see what people think.
Is it time to bite the bullet and start saying that?
Well, I think we need to, I think, yeah, I mean, I think that needs to be something we say in that big, in that bigger meeting. I think we say, this is the only building that doesn't require an addition.
Well, we wanna be careful, I think, following Bonnie's instruction, we wanna be careful that we haven't, don't make it sound like we've already made up our minds.
Correct.
But I do think it's okay to say, the board is confronted with a decision that has to be made sooner or later if we're gonna be good stewards of the taxpayer's dollars. Because we can't go another two years and not make some of these major...
Two years, like, within two years, I don't even think you're right, I don't think we have that.
Some of these things we have to do now. So the issue is, are we doing them in both buildings because we haven't made the decision yet? I mean, because if you just look at the elementary school and the high school, we're gonna pay $30,000 high side to inspect oil tanks, when maybe we only have to pay $15,000.
Yeah, because we're only gonna be using one. Well, yeah, and the biggest, I mean, my biggest fear is that we stay, is about staying in the elementary building is the massive heating system failure, you know, January 8th.
You mean Rochester.
Rochester, yeah. The Rochester Elementary School building, and because, you know, that, there is, as they say, there's no backup boiler. So if that, if, you know, if that dies, we're deciding, okay, we're gonna take a week off school and move everyone to the high school right quick, you know?
That's what we're deciding.
Or, or are we saying, well, we bite the bullet and we're putting in, we're bringing in, renting a boiler, we're bringing it outside, and we're trying to tie into the building while we rip the other one out, or put, you know, finding, finding the boiler we can buy in a week versus making a planful...
That's always a good way to say it, a lot of...
You know, and I go back to the preschool, we cannot have full-day preschool or any expansion of our current preschool in our building, we cannot.
Next year, that's not even more long-term, that's next year.
Yeah, and that's, right, now this coming school, but the year after that, and I just keep going back to that, I think that is gonna increase our scores, I think it's gonna increase the learning of our kids so much.
It goes back to Bonnie's...
Even if we did nothing, even if we assumed Rochester, Stockbridge is gonna stay right where it is.
Right.
It seems like we are wiser putting money into the high school building, that does give us more space for some eventuality, whatever it might be, than putting money into the elementary school building that we know is, it's an okay fit. We did fine this year, but it's a tight fit.
Sorry, Bonnie.
Well, and that other thing I heard...
We're still going to break.
He's getting even with me for writing mathematics up here.
I also heard at that same meeting, Carl, very strongly, that the, that the Stockbridge community does not wanna bomb this out, that they want us to plan and start to put...
Money away.
Money away, to have a multi-year plan to fix things. And I think that's a fine...
That's our thing, multi-year.
And I think that's a, I think that's a good point, I don't blame them.
Five-year plan, ten-year plan?
See, I think we're...
We've got this next four years.
I think we're being better stewards of the tax dollars by investing in a, it's kinda like, do you use the money to put a down payment on a relatively new car, or do you use the money to buy outright a 12-year-old car?
And then we're, we're spending a lot more money by the longer we wait to make a decision.
Right.
The longer we wait, and we've already taken, by some people's reckoning, an extra year than when we should've decided one way or the other, so we can say, okay, how about we give ourselves another six months? But I think it's sounding like, I mean, I don't know, if we're at a quorum, or a turning point, or whatever the word is there. But we gotta make a decision soon, and we save a lot more money the sooner we make a decision.
Well, I think that, I think that it seems like we would be super hard-pressed to move to the high school building this year.
We could do it in an emergency, but it's not ideal.
So it's, it's not, it's not a planful, it's not a planful thing to do. Having prepared the community.
Yeah.
Right, right, no, but, and that's, you know, just for the purposes of the conversation, we can't, that's not a viable option for, for this year.
Yes.
But I think we need to be, be saying, this is a decision that needs to be made for next year. So we need to be, we need to be building out, I think, a timeline that we are making, that we are committing to making a decision and picking the building, and at this point, from our initial research, we hired a company to help to give us numbers and information, and they tell us that really, the best investment it seems to be is in the high school. You know, we don't have to put an expansion on it, an addition on it, it seems to be cheaper to repair.
And one, and it's in better condition than the other school.
Right, so we need to, you know, so we need to say that and make that, make that point clear without making it clear that that's our decision, and we're just asking you to come to these meetings and rubber stamp things.
Do we, as part of that decision, extend it out to what I'm hearing from, you know, saying about decreasing population, that we've also got another decision to make, three years out, maybe, you know, 2002 or 2022, about how if we can actually keep two schools open?
And what, and what that means.
I don't think that decision's imminent, I think that's something you can put as a next.
So that the decision that's imminent...
We're in a next minute now, I don't think it's necessary, because it's not in the immediate use.
Because it's gonna cause panic.
Right.
Yeah, 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 no, no, no.
And I think when we present that, we...
But the fact is that by...
Projections on this.
But don't forget, but just by moving to the building, that was the thing that everybody, a bunch of the Stockbridge people said last year, once you're there, and once you're in that building, well, it's inevitable that all, that everybody's gonna go there.
Well, what's inevitable...
Once we make that choice, so in other words, they're gonna make that decision before us.
Right, but what we can say...
So why don't we control the message?
Right, and what we can say to folks is, you know, if we're really kind of putting the elephant in the table, right square in the middle of the table.
Yes.
It probably is inevitable because of the declining population in the state of Vermont. When Stockbridge gets to, I don't know, 39 and Rochester gets to 72, just a little bit I know about the egg formula, you will be down to bare bones, basic offerings, and you'll be lucky if you can do that, if we're gonna stay in two buildings, because there's so many duplicative costs.
This is why I don't, I, I think the more cohesive and inclusive we are in our decision when we finally present it, not decision, but what we're presenting to them is not just, okay, we're fixing the roofs, but it's like, here's our two-year, here's three years, this is what we're gonna be, this is what we're gonna be looking at, what do you wanna do? And if Stockbridge wants to go full choice, well, then that's their choice, and they'll do that. But if, but I'm just saying that we're giving them, we're serving them best, I think, by not giving them any illusions about what we're looking at.
I think being able to realize those truths, because I don't think, you know, trying to...
Transparency, we've always said that.
And it's not that if we move, if Rochester moves into the high school, it's not necessarily that it's inevitable. What it is, is that it provides space if it becomes necessary. That's another way to look at it, it's a choice.
It'll be a choice we have.
And if you wanna spend some money on one building, yeah. So it's like, I wanna get my head around this so we can write it out somehow, you know what I mean? Like, because we just made a good policy statement, and we actually put some timeline dates in it, next year, two years, three years, and I would love to write it down right now, so we have a draft policy statement about the future of facilities in the RSU.
See, and I think if we somehow captured the discussion we've just had for the last two hours, I'm, I'm just a fundamental believer that most people are reasonable, and there are, there are some of us who get very passionate when we hear something, and we have to get all our passion in our thoughts out, but if we presented...
Who's that?
If we presented, if we... I'm not stepping between Bruce and Mitch on that. What I will say is that, I think there's a very logical explanation for why you would choose the high school over the elementary school to begin investing money. There are certain people that we're never gonna convince, it isn't an opportunity to close the Stockbridge school. We're not gonna convince them of that. We're simply going to say, I hear what you're saying, this is the reason we chose the high school over the elementary school. And we can't control their thinking, all we can do is control what we say and how well we communicate it. And I think the vast majority of people are reasonable. I agree, I agree, and that's the vast majority of people are reasonable. Yeah, now, the vast majority of people may not always show up at the meetings, but they are, they will understand it.
And I mean, sir.
My accordion's doing Drag Queen, Drag Queen Story Hour at Randolph Library tomorrow.
Nice, she's been taking some...
We'll be glad you...
You know what I thought you said, I thought you said a dry cleaning story hour. Show up for that.
They're not, they're really good readers, because you just sit there and you watch the machine all the time, so they're very good readers, they'd be very good.
So I heard two things, well, I have one question. So direction in terms of action item from, you know, because that's where we've kind of overflowed to, from this list, is that really there's the roof repair situation at Rochester, and then inspect the oil tanks is what I hear us doing right now.
Yes, well, and we have to, we have to test the, test or repair the emergency lighting, right? Because they have, we can't, we can't, if something happened and our, you know, the, we were told that, you know, oh, they're fine, they just think, they may not go the full 90 minutes, but they're fine, and then we find out they're not.
Right.
Tragically, that would be bad.
And I think the best way...
So I think we should check those, I mean, I do think it's worthwhile to run that 90-minute test, and then either fix it or, or say, cool, it worked.
And I think the best way for you to do that is get ahold of Polly and find out which consultant made that recommendation, and have them come right back and do the full testing, because they already know a little bit about what's...
That's a good idea.
And some of it, so my brother-in-law's an electrician, and he explained to me some of this, is that emergency lights have been updated, so they're charging, the battery is charging while the power's on, like, there's something about the fixture itself.
Right.
So, and maybe that too, but, yeah.
And so we don't need to update the system to this fancy new, we just need to make sure our existing system works, and we will look towards upgrading as we go forward.
And maybe it's one or two that need to be replaced versus...
Okay. Lindy, just can I ask a clarification? So on the oil tanks, we're expecting just the high school one? Is that, well, actually, there's two in the high school, we're, we're inspecting those two, or are we...
Which school, right?
Well, also, of course, Stockbridge, yes. I guess, I know the question's between how about the elementary building and the high school building.
Well, I mean, if we think we're...
Give us a discount because they're out there?
Well, we're gonna link all three together, we're gonna put off...
You can get one project.
Actually, there's four tanks, three schools.
Yeah, see what the, I mean, I was...
So that's a cost of $80,000 if we...
No.
$15,000? Fifteen per tank for each.
Each location, so it's forty-five thousand dollars total of a well tank inspection.
Actually, it's six because there's two tanks at Rochester.
Have we done, have we done Stockbridge? Do we know? Have we inspected?
No, it has not been. It's on the list as well.
All three should get done. We're going to do one.
Well, that's the question. Do we want to do the elementary?
Remember, there's ramifications of this, that there may have to be repairs done after the inspections are done.
What you don't know, you can't repair.
Right.
You know, they're.
Yeah, but that's, that's a little scary. Well, that makes.
It's probably.
Do we want to do that to the Rochester Elementary School? It's basically, we're doing it to the high school. They're going to be there this year. We have to look at that.
I think we should, if, if, I think that's where we figure the town, at the same time, that's the emergency shelter. We should look to get some of the money for the oil tank, and we should be asking.
So we'll get all, we'll put it out to get all of them inspected at once.
It's not clear there's, there's four of them.
Oh, just Rochester.
I am. Three in one.
Okay.
Right, that, that should may go to the bed.
No, actually, I'd like to talk about.
Concern of if the tanks are leaking, you know, then suddenly we have an emergency situation.
Oh, my gosh, the story.
Okay.
Oil tanks, uh, once it's inspected, the state might come in and pay for, or repair, because we're talking about polluting the White River. And the state will be interested in, they, they actually, we're going to back up an insurance policy or whatever, what, seven years ago or something, when the tanks were supposed to be inspected. So the state was going to jump in, so I'm not sure what type of cost the state.
But they might contribute.
So do you remember the tanks were not inspected seven years ago?
I do not think so, because they, you have to dig it all up. And I don't remember any digging activity that ever happened.
No, I don't think they have to dig it up. They have to look, they have to open.
Pressurizing, they pressurize them?
Yeah, if they're double, which I doubt they are because they're so old, but if they're double-walled tanks, they just check for e, for either oil or water in between the two ones, because that means it's leaking one way or the other.
Otherwise, they have to dig it up and check.
Otherwise, if it's not, they have to dig it up.
Right, which causes, could, you know, there's an old tank, it caused problems on an old tank. Removing the dirt that's been around it.
You may have to remove it and replace it.
Depending on what they find wrong, we may have to do repairs.
Which is a whole other cost that will.
That's what I'm saying, once we get it inspected, and it's not, no reason not to get it inspected, it's just.
Be ready for the ramp.
But once, if the tanks fail, then you might want to go to a different heating system.
Right, right, well, we definitely want to look into what all of our options are.
That's a good point.
Because your carbon footprint.
Slippery slope.
And you know, even if the tanks, if that's something the board's interested in doing, even if the tanks don't fail, you may want to look into that, because if the tanks fail, let's say they fail three weeks before school opens up. You don't have five months to look at other types of heating system and inspect them out and all that. You've got to go right back to fossil fuels.
You can have above-ground tank temporarily.
Temporarily, right, because you got to open schools. They don't do any ground tanks anymore, correct?
Well, no, they do, they can, but it's more expensive. Pete Parish just put that new diesel tank at that skip mark, because the, what they quoted him for an underground tank was just enormous. So, I mean, the idea of putting it above ground is much cheaper. Can I just read this?
Right, and then that was my second thing. Like, Ethan said we should have some sort of.
Well, this is just something I just decided to write, and it's just, because it seemed like it was two pretty strong statements, which is, within the year, due to the need to save money on facility repairs, the school district will need to make a decision about which, which building needs to house the Rochester campus.
For the twenty-twenty-one school year.
Yeah.
Beginning with the twenty-twenty-one school.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And beyond.
Beginning with, yeah, okay, twenty-twenty-one, I'll put that in the front. And then the second one, and I'm totally, yeah, well, within, I put three years, due to trends, but maybe it should be four, because that's the five-year turnaround, or, you know, evaluation. Within three years, due to trends of declining population, both student and town, the school district will need to make, and this, this next part, totally open to this, to need to make a decision about which campus needs to house the combined school.
I don't think we should put that out there.
No. Well, no, no, but, but I'm just saying.
I think that'll come up. I think I'd let that come up as part of the discussion, Ethan.
Okay.
I wouldn't put it out there right now. I think it.
No, 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 I'm not saying let's put it out there. I just wanted to write it down because it sounded like we talked about it. Plus the fact that anybody watches, as if anybody does watch these, you know, they're going to hear us talking about it.
Well, they hear us talking, but it, to place that as a.
Oh, no, 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 no. But I'm just saying it's.
It falls me every time.
But talk to me, talk, I mean, talk about a major action issue that we want to, I think we need to know that it's out there. That we need to make this decision, and I think four years, right before the reappraisal time, is a very valuation.
I think you might want to be, you may want to get a little less specific about that. That we'll need a.
Discussion. I think we need.
Discussion about future.
I think what we, what we really need to. As I said, this is for us. This is not for publication. Right, but I think, I think what we need to be, to be thinking about is, what we really need to do is, I think, get our administrations to really, let's, let's, you know, have a, a, a discussion of how many kids makes a viable school, because it's going to be, I, I think it's going to be less determinate on three years, or five years, or seven years, or something like that. It's determined on when we get below forty kids, when we get below twenty kids. Where do you say, this is, this isn't, this isn't a cohort that, that really should be educated by themselves? Because that's what is, that, it doesn't, in my mind. Saying the same thing, it's just in doing it differently. Right, right, but it's saying, I think the trigger that we need to be watching for, and we need to, I think, think about now, because it's really hard to say, it'd be, if we said, if we said, okay, thirty-five is the number that we need to, that really makes it hard, you know, we, we at least set that, and then we're not going and saying, gee, we're, we're right around thirty-five. Is that too many kids? Are not enough kids? Let's keep it going for one more year, and then we go down to thirty. And then I think, because what I watched, when I was first coming on the school board, was the, you know, the, the, the closing of the Granville Hancock School, where it just became, there was kind of was this group of parents that really just were like, oh, we could just be a K through two. We could be really, you know, this really, that because they didn't have a planful and really an analysis of where, you know, when it was educationally worse for the kids to be there versus be on a bus, you know, having some of that thought done now, while we're, while we know it's not, the wolf isn't at the door, so that we're making a, 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 a plan that's based on, you know, science versus, versus emotion.
Because that would be my first inclination, is just what you said they did, they did in Hancock or Granville. Well, we'll just go to K two. Let's just go to K two. Well, right, is that really what's best for, educationally, for those K two kids?
So we, we need a discussion within our communities, within the next, within the, what's coming.
Ongoing discussion.
We need an ongoing, need an ongoing.
I think one of the things I tie it to, to, just two things if I could say, I'm just going to push a tiny bit, to use your phrase, I, I think the wolf may already be at the door. And we're just now starting to, to recognize it, because we do have things like special ed in a hallway, which is where it shouldn't be. We do have things like three grade levels in a classroom, which is going to work. None of us know if that's ideal. We do have, um, we don't have a full, how am I going to say this?
What did you?
We do have a full-time principal to be leadership. We acknowledge that was important for raising student achievement data. We have it, but we have it in sort of a unique way. We don't have two full-time salaries in that budget. So I think the wolf is somewhat at the door, and I'm not saying that that's how we present this, but I think the kinds of things that Ethan's typing up right now, we need to preface by, you're having this very rich discussion, because you're trying to figure out how to offer educational opportunities to kids that, you guys were talking second language when I came two years ago. We still haven't been able to get it in the budget. We've been talking about an elementary math lab every since I've come along. We don't have that in the budget. So I think we're talking about some of these changes, investing in the high school versus the elementary school, because it's, we'll have a better facility when we're done, and maybe we'll invest a little bit less money, because we want to do things for kids. It's not just that we have a vested interest to go in here, there, and the other place. We're trying to figure out how to offer to our kids everything we know they should be offered.
And that, you turned me around with that, because my, my real thing is, having seen towns destroyed. I didn't want to close the school. I, I still don't want to close the school. However, when you think of it from the kid point of view, three kids in, you know, third grade, not so cool, not so good, not a good thing to have.
I think, I think the way Carl phrased it is absolutely, you know, what is a viable school?
Right.
What is a viable, actually, I would say.
I think our taxpayers are going to tell us it's a viable school, what they can afford.
Well, yeah, that's it, and, and we need to have a plan ready when they start quoting down budgets, because they're, they're too far.
Too much, yeah. What I, what I guess what I'm trying to say is, and I, I guess I'm not being very articulate on it. I can take you to some schools right now. We could drive in the car, and I could take you to some schools right now, who are staying open. But in my opinion, hands down, they have no business staying open, because kids are not getting what they need. But the driving question isn't, what opportunities do we want to offer our youngsters? The driving question is, how do we keep our school open? And I, I too don't want to close a school, but my number-one focus is on those kids that Lyndy and I agree every day, and to be frank, I don't care what school we do it in, or if we do it in a tent.
Yeah, no, I, I, I concur.
As long as they get a solid education in this.
There's a small momentum that happens, where you have less kids means less programs. Less programs means more kids leaving, which, which causes you to have.
Well, the problem.
It's a spiral.
Well, the, the problem becomes is that it's often the families, the families that recognize or, or value education and have the ability or the means to relocate, because the, you know, they, they go out, and then you're often left with the, the families that don't have the means. This is what happened. To, to, to.
This is what Sharon Academy did. This is what's just happened at Newton.
But it's what Sharon Academy did to Rochester High School.
Affluent families who sought to have their kids in middle school somewhere else have chosen to do that.
They chose to go to Sharon Academy?
Or, that, or other places. Yeah, they're paying because they can pay. And, and also, there was some scholarship money that was out there, because the communities, these schools feel like if they can get them early, they'll stay. And that just allows them to have more viability. So it's, it's that, plus it's, the, the kids that are carpeting, is now they, the kids that are behind, who can't afford to go, are now saying, I've lost my whole social group that I've been with, and why can't I live? Well, we don't have the money to send you to wherever.
Plus, a mix of class of higher, lower performing kids, right, brings, can bring.
But then it's not an equal access to, I mean, it's access, but it's not equal.
Equal opportunity. It is not equal opportunity.
It further drives the wage.
It becomes.
Absolutely.
So the.
And that's what we don't want to happen with us.
We don't want this discussion to be about buildings.
About kids.
We want it to be about kids.
And the reason we're focusing on the buildings is so we can create more funds to provide opportunities for kids.
I think it's also important to say, you know, we started initially kind of talking about, you know, at the beginning, some about, you know, marketing and vision, and, you know, again, let's, let's keep in mind that your second scenario, or your first scenario, actually, your second one was the, things are going to decline, and we might have to combine into one building. You know, your, your first scenario was, you know, we create something that's sustainable and that attracts families. I mean, if we have, if, if, if we had a, if we have a quality program, what is not going to make a family in, in, in Granville say, okay, do I want to let my kid up, up over one-twenty-five to Middlebury, or do I want to, you know, do I want to just come down, scoot down one-hundred to, to, to Rochester? And then my kid can go wherever they want to go for high school.
Guys, I have seen total white schools, total black schools, total, a hundred percent African-American. Those kids succeeded beyond the white parochial school. We got the whole school integrated. All they wanted was to see those test scores. These kids are doing this? I want my kid to go in that program.
Right.
Right.
They sent.
Yeah, in reference to possibly the high school being converted and all this, and promoting and, and all this, I want to emphasize the environmental aspect of it, the carbon footprint, and how important that is. If I was a young parent right now, or even thinking about having a child, I'd love to see a school system that was facing reality and participating before I decide to even have a child.
Right, look at solar.
That's a good thought. Mason, oh, that.
Well, I'm a little guilty. I'm like, two kids right now, I'm like, you know, I have to apologize constantly.
It has, it has been brought up many times of, oh, well, has anybody looked at putting solar on the roof of the high school? Or using.
Perfect solar.
You know, it's, stuff like that.
Not the right orientation.
Right, you know, that we could start looking in that direction.
Well, that's it.
If we know that that, there's a decision being made, that that is the building that we're going to put our resources into.
And that's proactive.
Yeah, that's proactive.
It's proactive and managing our money and managing our educational situation.
So if you take those three bubbles, yours, I think, and someone else's, and Mason's, and put them together, Lyndy and I have to get those tanks inspected. My guess is at least one of them's going to fail, because they're all ancient. If the board were sitting here saying, okay, we're going to do, and let's say one fails, we're going to do an above-ground fuel tank, whatever that takes, because we have to keep the buildings open, while we plan for what type of fuel, of permanent heating system are we going to put in this building? That's sort of seizing the moment and looking forward, and saying, that's worth this investment. That's why we're spending fifteen thousand dollars.
It starts to make this so much, just, just, my brain just clicks over that, you know, this whole idea of, of, focusing on one place, I mean, what could happen in this one place? And if we think about for the kids, for the kids, for the education.
What opportunities do we want to offer to those kids?
And it's a great physical space.
Yeah.
It has great opportunities there, it really does.
A couple of things, a couple of things that, this is a couple of other reasons I would, I would kind of, and I understand it's the board's decision, but I would advocate strongly for us not losing complete control over the high school building, is that you can't find, I don't think, an elementary school in state of Vermont that has any better music room or drama facility in terms of that, like a gem sitting in the middle of that high school.
Certainly, I guarantee you, not outside of Chitting County.
Yeah, definitely not, definitely.
I mean, I, I.
The auditorium?
Yeah.
It's wonderful. The shop, the shop is great.
I know, I mean, we had a great elementary school shop program when I went to school.
Really?
Excellent. That's why I learned to be a builder, really. Um, you know, it's just, that's the kind of things. I mean, we didn't put it on our list, but it's such a basic thing. They did it at the summer camp.
Oh, Maker's Face.
They, they did, they did this part of One Planet.
I saw those. I'm sitting there talking to Lyndy one day when they were making tools.
The morning's very quiet because the rest went lessons, and the afternoon is woodworking.
I feel that we have to educate our kids more wholly now than ever before, meaning like, take over a lot of what you, we maybe learn from our parents, that the school really needs to be teaching it now. You know, so it does, that space does offer some more opportunities with the, the FCS room that has, you know, small kitchen area, canning, right, freezing.
We could do a lot with parents.
Right.
You know, I mean, we're saying, certainly kids succeed without parent help, but the data's clear that they do better with parent help. Think if we had parent classes, how to read to your kids? How to, you know, reinforce this, how to, what toys, what do you speak, how do you speak to kids? You know, what language do you use? So there's, if we could offer those total community kinds of programs, the pre-K, parent programs, all of that, after-school care, they'll come, they will come.
And that will fill up the space.
Yeah.
Well, I have a, a, I like all these ideas. Um, what is your, from, you guys, you're superintendent. What do you guys feel the state, what, what is, because I feel like the state is making, the AOE has this constant kind of changing of rules, making new requirements that make it harder for small schools to exist in rural areas.
Obviously.
Where is the state going to stop and saying, are we going to close, I, I just, I worry, I feel like they're closing everything in rural areas, and I think it's really disappointing. And I, I get concerned about us being so enthusiastic, but we're going to, we're, we've got the best intentions. But what, like, in the overall sense from like the state, like, are they going to allow, like, our communities to even have elementary schools? Like, I mean, what, in like ten years?
Right.
Because I don't feel like we're being supported rurally at all by our state.
I, I think if you look back at where they've been going, and of course, the administration's changed, and legislature changes, and they have different priorities and things like that, but pretty much what's going on is this, we were not going to be sustainable with so many schools, and they would, they just needed to consolidate, order to be able to stay viable, because these places were just not, not viable anymore. The other thing is, they seem to, I, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for this, but they just seem to be laying more on SUs than they ever did before. And, and, you know, it's really difficult. I mean, from audits to busing, to special ed, to. I mean, from audits to busing to special ed to all the different accountability, all kinds of different accountability to data. We just, we're being asked to do an awful lot more. And I'm not whining. I mean, it's just the reality of every day, you know? They do not want these things coming out of individual little school districts. And I know that every time we get to town meeting time or before, when SU budgets are about to be passed, nobody wants to add to the SU budget. That's like taboo, you know? And I don't want to take things out of your own budget to put into the SU. I mean, we've had this big debate about technology services and how much, you know, we want to take away from, where is the budget for tech people? We've left it in your budgets for your schools. And, you know, and their discussion was, should we take that on as the SU? No, because I don't want, I don't want to make the SU budget go crazy because it won't pass. Everybody will say, no, no, no. You'll have it out of your budget. It will cost you less, but it's going to cost something and we're going to have it in there. So I don't see it. I mean, that's what the trend is. I think they feel like they can control or dictate the SU's maybe more than they can to local school boards.
Do you think, but also follow up with Megan, do you think it's, do you think another Act 46 is out there that's going to reduce even?
We have some stuff on that.
Well, there's going to have to be some time go by first, but I don't think it's going to be, it's going to happen naturally. If you look at the projections that I gave you, you know, by, it's supposed to go down, you know, another eight to 10, 12% the next couple of years. I mean, and this is, this projection goes all the way out to 2026. This lifeline is the future. This is currently, you can see we hit our pinnacle in 1990. And it's been flipping a couple of times, but mostly it's just downhill. People just aren't moving here.
And also not having their kids. People don't have, there's not necessarily like less families around here.
That's right, that's right.
The other thing.
Less kids.
One, two.
There was a big bump, the last big bump I remember in Vermont was after 9/11. But a lot of people.
Left the cities.
Left the cities, get out of the cities. So not that I would ever wish anything like that, but with some of the environmental costs and things like that that are happening with cities, that some people are, I think some people are thinking about rural environments and we could be that, you know, we could be that place.
That is very true.
When we moved up, I moved up in 1969 the first time, we almost doubled Gazeville population. There were 24 of us who moved up within this area from Vermont.
Yeah.
And our kids went to school and we were on the select board.
Same in Rochester.
In Rochester, in Gazeville, there were 20.
You've got a big family.
But what they're saying is, I agree with a lot of the environmental changes that are happening. People are trying to get away from the sea boards as well. There's a lot, there is a lot of populations in the cities. And again, back to us having a really great school that has great scores, that has great support.
Which is part of the community too, that's part of the advancing community.
The other thing is too, this is a big retirement state, guys. I mean, when I told my eye doctor that in New York, he said, you're like the fourth person who's retired to Vermont. And these grandparents are bringing kids with them.
There was an article not too long ago called The Gray State, not The Green Mountain State, but The Gray State. And just talked about just the numbers of people that were retiring here.
Yeah, my whole mountain.
Well, it's all, it's all interconnected, I think, to answer your question. There's not affordable housing. There's not the job opportunity in these amazing valleys that we live in. But Bonnie and I just had this conversation the other day. At 22, when I graduated college, I could not afford to come back to my home state and work. I would have to move back and live in Maryland, which was like, ew.
That's what they were saying.
Bendy, you're right.
They know. It's a conversation we have frequently.
We would have that conversation about you being the black.
Of course, she didn't say, they were saying no. She didn't say that part.
But it's one of those things, or I could live somewhere where I could afford to live on my own as a young teacher at the beginning. It's just one of, it's all intertwined. We need like, it's that chamber of commerce these groups was talking about earlier too.
And it really surprises me that I would actually step up and defend the state of Vermont at this point. But I don't think, what I learned going through Act 46 is that they weren't being sinister and mean-hearted. Vermont, basically, Vermont's finances are doing this. They're dwindling. They are shrinking.
Hearing it from business people.
Our bond rating bumps against being dropped every few months. It's not like they're holding all this money up there. They don't want to give to schools. They simply can't sustain the number of schools. We had some schools in Vermont when Act 46 kicked in that had fewer than 30 students in them. And they, it's just not sustainable. On one side, it's not sustainable. On the other side, it's probably not necessarily great for kids.
Because of all the regulations that you have.
Okay, you two have to stop for a second. These guys hand up for a while.
Oh, that's okay. Well, continue with the population aspect. I think it's really important to start getting away from the stealth denial. The fact is, is that with the temperature rising in many parts of the country, Vermont is one of the sweeter spots. And I think it's time to start recognizing that it's not going to be about the economy, why people are moving here. The economy will be recreated when they get here.
Because the environment.
So, so in your projections of five years, I mean, they're already talking, just this summer, new records in Greenland, temperature heat bubbles. I don't know for sure, but for my lifetime, I'm looking at the science. And I'm not seeing, I see a disconnect and it's referred to as stealth denial because we're all, don't want to believe it. But how do we deal with the influx of population that may be banging at our door shortly?
By having that, by having that infrastructure, and this is more on a town base, to have the internet, to have the cell phone,
to have the broadband, because a lot of people can come up and they don't need a company up here that they're working at. They can do a lot of remote work.
There's a lot more remote nowadays.
Right. So again, that's just back to, we need to draw them to our really exciting, highly performing school.
Just.
All right, now.
I just want to say the word.
Global warming is going to steam our schools.
It used to be sexy. Let's cover that one.
I think they might have heard me say another 9/11.
We are at 12:50 now. We're poppy, sorry. We are at 12:50 right now.
Which is an hour behind.
Which is what, we started about an hour behind. Is there any more action items that we need to finalize before we, or we need to take another little bit? Or is it time for lunch?
I think it's time to get up.
Let's move out and then have some food.
No, I think they make, I think let's do, but can we keep lunch to?
Let's keep it fast as you can make those burgers.
Well, as fast as you can get to.
I'll turn on the grill.
No, 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 go, go, go.
Chop, chop.
So let's check out.
Do you guys want to like go out?
It does feel, it does feel like, it does feel like there's been a natural progression to this.
Yeah. Okay, so you're.
Just there.
Switch up here.
Well, they flowed into each other instead of melding at the right time.
I think it worked well.
Carl is a masterful.
Very productive.
Well, I smell like, okay.
To have any, kind of like next steps. We need to do this. We need to step.
Could we do annual meeting and report review? Could that be a subcommittee? That some people could go off and take input, like we could spend 15 minutes saying all the things and then, because I wouldn't mind being on that committee. If somebody else, you know, two other people would be willing to be on it with me. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's that, I mean, we haven't done that much so far.
And I think there were some good points brought up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Especially Rob Gardner's explanation of the budget. There's something.
Oh, yeah.
I think, yes, you should think about doing something that Rob Gardner said as well with the budget, just say like descriptions.
No, it was like.
What was I saying?
Little notes before every change of number, or every different section, there's a little sentence that just says what this is.
Yeah, what's it? So your recommendation for number seven is to actually create a committee at this point.
Some committee.
That just takes it over.
Well, but I think we get 10, 15 minutes of everybody throwing out our stuff. We take some.
Right now.
Yeah, and then we go off and we do it and we meet back. We meet back with you in, you know, October or something like that.
And so can there be three people on a committee without it being a quorum?
Yep, a quorum.
Okay.
Anybody else want to be on that?
Well, I'm.
What's everyone else doing?
I'm on enough committees so I can honestly step down from the committee.
Which committee?
Well, I will defer to other.
But this is a lot easier to meet because it's three, we can meet.
It won't take her long. Won't take her long.
No, it won't take her.
If we get a couple from other districts, you can just use them as models.
Well, I, I have in my vision, in my head, is like no other annual report I've ever seen anyway, but maybe they're out there. But I mean, I mean, I'm talking a really animated, explained journey. I will draw people into the reports so they'll actually look at stuff and want to read it.
When I heard broken up into sections. So like general elementary was this total and then it was.
Take some notes.
Let's take 10 minutes now to talk about that.
Who are we missing? We're missing two.
So I'm going to sign a timer for 10 minutes so that we only.
And I'll keep a running list up here.
Okay.
Okay, good.
And given that we have 10 minutes, it's probably just better to surface the topics and not get bogged down in discussing any more.
Exactly.
So one of the questions I had though is our postal permit for bulk mailing. Is it true that that is the only bulk mailing that our school sends out that requires that postal permit? If so, yeah, go ahead.
We don't send out any others.
Okay. Can we use the SU postal permit, bulk postal permit, and we pay for our own postage, but we don't have to buy our own permit?
You were going to be?
Yeah.
I don't know that we have an SU proof.
Okay, so I guess that would be a question to find out.
I don't even think we have one. At least if we do, I don't know.
I'll ask Christine.
So the SU doesn't mail anything to the entire district, do they, to the school boards?
Yeah, we leave that to the school board.
You don't have any?
That might help with transparency.
Not that I know of.
Who sends out the AC, the WR?
We don't get mail from the SU.
BSU annual report.
That's included in our annual.
Okay.
Wouldn't be a, yeah, this is the kind of thing, it's like.
Okay, got it.
We're going to look at all the reports and we're just going to break them down. But so anyway, things that we should, let's start with this. Things we should improve for the annual report. Number one, what?
Entire budget.
Entire budget.
Entire budget, but saying, that's vague. What do you mean?
Well, make sure.
Explaining, explaining.
More proofreading?
More proof.
Start it earlier.
More proofreading? Okay, good. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And have it out earlier so we can have an inform, or have a meeting before the vote is what I.
We also talked about information that we can have earlier so that we're not bringing everything together at the last minute. Like there's certain budgets and certain things that we can have months in advance.
Right. If you have a picture of a kid from one activity or a class, you've proved it that it's okay, that everybody be in it.
Pictures throughout the report would get people to look through the report.
Well, we have to, we'll have to discuss about amount we want to spend on that report.
But even if it's black and white, black and white doesn't cost that much.
But right, just as we're, throughout the years, things come along, it would be good to have one point person that it all gets sent to.
I'm going to suggest that we ask Tara to help us put together a working calendar because that makes all this happen in the right timelines.
We've got a, number eight is calendar.
I meant a working calendar to develop the annual report.
Great.
Who does what by when?
Calendar. Well, yeah, we need intermediate action points so we can make sure that we're hitting.
Whoa.
We're hitting our.
I've never heard that before.
Inter.
Student count by town and by grade level. I heard the committees asked for.
Student count by.
And including the city towns.
Right. Because we had to like break it out.
And what, by student count by?
Town and grade level.
Grade level, thank you.
And also, you know, where our kids are going.
The tuition.
And I'm going to have explanatory notes throughout.
That's true. I think we're also like, also the physical count and the bill.
Well, the tuition was in there, but they wanted the physical count. Somebody asked for that.
Yeah, physical.
Yeah, physical.
This is four kids going to Woodstock.
Right.
Two going to Sharon and six going to Middlebury.
There are, the seventh graders are all in these schools, so we have a grid. Here's all the receiving schools, here's all the grades. You know, there's an matrix that says.
And then at the bottom of the tuition count, they wanted how many, because we put them all together. They just wanted to know like how many of that total was, were Rochester students and how many of that total were Stockbridge residents.
So it was charting out like.
A lot more specifically than somebody, yeah.
Lot more data.
We need to tell them more data. How many are tuition students from Pittsfield and how many?
Well, they wanted that in the building, but for the tuition list. Yeah, they needed to know that, you know, X number were Stockbridge residents total, and X number were Rochester.
Yeah, although we should, we should think about if we want to.
Or just have that.
And I mean, it's.
How much do we want?
Right, how much we want to differentiate the kids by Stockbridge versus Rochester because I don't want to start having a conversation about, well, all those Rochester kids are going to that fancy, you know, Woodstock or going to Middlebury. And Stockbridge kids are going to Sharon Academy, which is cheap.
But I think we could just say 50 Rochester, 50 of these 100 kids are Rochester and 50 of them are Stockbridge.
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Carl, that reminds me too, because sometimes the data, the actor, yeah, the data is inaccurate around tuitions. We should probably list all the schools our youngsters go to and what the actual tuitions are for those schools. So we start looking at facts.
Yep, I agree with that. I think we also, it'd be nice if we had a formal, I mean, we often talk about it in the principal's note, but it'd be nice if we had something formal about kids' performance and student outcomes. So that we're saying, you know, in here, here's the grading, or here's the testing scores, or here's just the general, how the kids are performing.
Student achievement.
You know, beyond, you know, like I said, beyond anecdotally in the superintendent and the principal reports.
Do we, now, when Rob Gardner was speaking, was he speaking of what in detail of like, okay, so the PE, you know, budget? Like, does he just want like a description of like, this pays for, I think, two days, or is it like a quick, like a little data?
I think, well, I don't know that that was what he was asking. Other community members were.
So they can get a vision of what's going on.
Yeah, like what that dollar amount pays for.
And that's, that's what I'm talking about.
How many days a week there is.
But this is, but this is, this is where I think as each number changes in the thing, we put two lines there that say, the following numbers, the following, all of it reflects this for this particular position. This person teaches this number of days at this, at these schools. And I think, I think let's err on the side of too much information this year. You know, I don't think there's anything that's, you know, confidential.
But he also, Rob Gardner also wanted that for the S T A.
Yeah, well, I think that's what we're telling you.
I don't know if that actually happened on the SU level.
No, well, we could do it. We can take that data and we can break it out and give it our explanation and make it our job to do it.
I think Tara being in from the beginning will.
Yeah.
Oh, she was like giving a more.
We're going to have the same business manager in 2020 that we have now. Give her a bonus.
We do a toast, the toast.
Yeah, absolutely. Toast to Tara.
If she sticks with us after these last two weeks, she'll stick with us.
She's due for her evaluation this month and I'll be very happy with what she's doing.
Oh, my God.
Hasn't been perfect, but she's, and she's had a lot of stumbles, but not because of her own fault, but because of what she's been presented with to get over. And, you know, those stumbles improve her performance because she learns from them. And I'm very, she's tough. She's really tough. It's also the way she was raised.
She's done very well.
She's, you know, so.
I think the other thing that would help us flush this out is at a, at a meeting, like even at our meeting down at the, that's coming up, would be to just put a general, community members, if there's anything specific you think we should include in the annual report, please drop an email to the board chair, Carl. It lets people feel that you're including them.
The Herald too, was it? Put them on the pages.
I mean, you may get no response, but at least you've reached out and said.
I think student, not just student performance data or achievement data, but just what we're doing with our kids in general.
They want to know.
Right.
Their way of being a part of.
Because if it's, if it's a book of numbers, very few, except for the wonderful loving geeks of us, are actually going to look through the whole thing, you know?
They want to know what.
Wonderful, loving.
It was complicated.
Wonderful loving. You know, it's a wonderful loving.
Brian comes in there all the time, so I'm okay with that.
Geek is a.
I'm so lucky to have Jenny, Amy and Carl, those numbers people on our board. No, that's genius.
And maybe this means, you know, what the students are doing, you know, we talk about what we want from our principal's report, you know, what kind of things, you know, is it illustrated? Do we have students write for the, you know, do some writing in there? The thing is, if you put some creative stuff through the thing, people are more likely to look at the thing.
I think we should have student artwork in it.
Yeah, student artwork, exactly.
I'd like to see, there was a handout about your homestead tax and how the tax rate that is, that we're voting on affects your, the gentleman, I guess, passes it out in Stockbridge every year. And I think it would be, have something like the implications of these tax rates, keeping in mind your homestead tax. I'd like to see, there was a handout about your homestead tax and how the tax rate that is, that we're voting on affects your, the gentleman, I guess, passes it out in Stockbridge every year, and I think it would be, have something like the implications of these tax rates, keeping in mind your homestead tax. And, yeah, it's a chart that's always gonna go beyond a lot of people, but...
There's some people.
There's, I think it'll be good information for...
That is a very complicated page, I mean, I, we've gone over it several times, some of that, that one page, you know, with the columns that goes down, it was, holy smoke.
Yeah, no, I'm not even talking about that, I'm talking about this is a statewide thing that he got.
If this is your property, this is how much your taxes are.
Basically, that is 10 minutes, so they can do that.
I think we've got enough to start with.
Moderator, moderator.
Oh, we gotta talk about moderator, because that was killing me, that was killing me.
Thank you.
And do that in a town, right, moderator.
This is Stockbridge, the general Stockbridge town moderator. What?
Can you?
Because I thought it was...
It has been for over 30 years.
It was, it was a problem for me.
Well, the guy who did it the previous year at Rochester, he was good.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, this was a pro, this guy did not control the meeting, and it's totally the joke moderator's job to control the meeting, and, and I had a real problem with it, I mean, I thought we have to be careful of that.
Moderator, you need a good moderator, you go, I mean, you can't...
Yeah, well, I can't do it, but I mean, I just...
Meeting will be in Rochester this year.
Yeah, so maybe we just...
I think it should be on the list of something that we are setting up prior to and not...
But he's been elected as the moderator, he was elected as the moderator.
From the board, right?
So unless we unelect him...
No, you, you elected him.
So we won't elect a different one by Rochester.
He is our moderator for the year, but when...
So we won't be offending him if we elect Dan McKinley?
I don't think he wanted to do it anyway.
No, he did not, he was like, oh, okay. Okay, good.
Also, as, she brought up townless.
Just double checking.
Residency, because we're supposed to have a residency, you know?
Just make sure we're double checking all those things that happen.
So technically, the town clerk should sit at the door and check people before they come into the gym.
So this is all communication, we just need to make sure we have set up prior to...
And the first motion should be to let people like Lindy and I and Bruce join the assembly, because we shouldn't even be sitting with you guys until you guys approve us to do that.
Right, because we're not town residents.
Because we're not town residents.
We gotta, we gotta follow it by the book.
And I just added this one, I don't want people to think I snuck anything on here, our business manager, every year for the last like seven or eight years, has to get up and in three minutes explained it, explained it, explained the big pieces of the funding.
Yeah.
And we're hearing back from people, they're finally starting to understand it, because it's really not all that complicated, once you get to the bottom of what we need to raise, and then it's pretty straightforward.
Where our income comes from.
Exactly, in the common level appraisal and how, and she takes about three minutes, and she's done it for five or six years, and people are actually starting now to feel like they understand some of it.
Well, that's because you've had a business manager, the same business manager.
Well, we're gonna have the same one too.
Okay.
Is that all for this page?
Is that it for this page?
I think that's good, I think the committee is, me, Ethan, Megan, and Bonnie. Sure. And we will really just kinda, you know, keep going forward with this and get back to everybody and make sure.
Okay, good.
So let's just be clear, let's set a date, by the October meeting?
Yeah.
We'll have something, we'll have a basic outline and maybe some examples.
Great.
That'd be excellent. October, whatever that is.
About first Tuesday in October is first.
Who's gonna beat up, who's gonna win first? October 1st.
It's October 5th, it's running very quickly.
What's that?
It's my 75th birthday.
Oh!
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, no, we'll get it out of the way now.
Are you there?
Oh, I'm hammered, so.
Well, what do we got, Debbie?
Good, next.
Okay, so...
Look at that, so efficient.
Jenny had started talking about creating...
Now we're only 15 minutes behind.
Yay, look at that, we caught up!
Sweet.
About a calendar? Yeah.
Yeah, I think we talked about, I think you would've talked about it too, Google Doc, that we said other people could put it in, just kind of stuff to remember throughout the year, like contacting the board of trustees, I don't remember what else we talked about, I don't know if we wanna...
Well, again, all, everything to do with the annual meeting, prep for the annual meeting.
Well, even this teacher appreciation, we can talk to it, so, you know, we should put that stuff.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Now, who's going to manage this calendar?
I can start it, I don't know if it's something that, since it's Google Doc, anybody could go in and work on it.
Okay, right, and it's, it's a Google Doc, it's linked to all of our SU emails, so as a new board member comes along, they would as well immediately have access to it.
And then once it gets set, it's just, we follow it, which is tweak it, and Tara should weigh in on it, because there's certain times we have to set tuition rate, we have to have fact rate announced by...
Yeah, what else, what else do we wanna set?
Well, should we put on, I mean, I think this has been really a helpful meeting, I think it's been effective and I think we move forward, should we have it more than once a year? Should we have another one?
I don't think a bad idea is to do a, oh, twice a year, like...
Well, when school's actually in session.
Yeah, when we're actually moving.
Weekly party at the...
But your party tension is shortening some of those three to four hour nights.
Well, and that's the thing, we do, we either need more meetings more often, so we're not long, or maybe a retreat that we can calibrate out at one time.
How about we combine the retreat with sort of the early budget work of January or February, so that part of the retreat, the six hours or whatever we do retreat, is just focused on the budget, and then we... Do you think we'd be, I mean, I don't know, when would that be, January or February, is that too late, or is that...
I don't know if we're voting until February.
Well, you wanna make sure you identify all the numbers in it.
Right.
Well, most of, but we can even put together... I would say February, February would be probably a good time, because well, tuition rates will be set, we'll have, we'll, we'll starting to have an idea of where families are gonna be going. When's the vacation?
Well, our annual meeting has to be warned by the beginning of April, so we should be on at least one or, revision one or two of a budget by February though, shouldn't we?
Yes.
Well, hopefully.
Yeah.
We may still be waiting for some big numbers.
Well, exactly, yeah.
So we can start something in February.
Well, I think we should go ahead and think about doing a retreat, and then if it corresponds with doing budget work at the same time, great, if not, then we're just gonna...
Well, and we also, we also have to keep in mind that beyond just the regular business of this, of this next board year, we're also dealing with our building.
Yeah.
And our building, figuring out who the, you know, how we're reaching out to the community and...
Right.
So we can't wait till that, we need an interim, we need like February.
We do, yeah, and, and not, not try to duck tail with any budget, and let's just look at a February retreat. Yeah, I think it'll just help us make sure that the things that we're talking about right now will be moved in that direction, before the, so the next school year, we're not scrambling and we're, we're moving with, you know, intention.
So can I just put an action item out there, because we mentioned a while ago, and I don't wanna let it, was talking with the tech guy about our webpage.
Yes.
That we should put somebody on before we leave today.
Are we, yeah, I have to go on our website, like, we need to have our board emails, except for...
Courtney, Courtney was having a field day with it.
Right, so if we could have maybe one board member be the taskmaster with Bruce over here to make the connections with the technology guy.
I know, right?
Would that make sense?
So I can certainly talk to him. Yeah, so you would updating, you know, and then you get out to us, okay, we need pictures, okay, we need stuff like that, and then, you know, we can manage that stuff.
I'd also like to suggest, another way of communicating besides the website is that the schools have been putting out newsletters, and I know the school, I know Lisa took it upon herself and Bonnie to, and Lindy to, to update the school board portion of it, but maybe the school board should be putting out, you know, if there's a monthly newsletter, that we should be giving like a monthly statement.
Yeah, I think...
Jenny, is you?
Jenny, you give a second, Jenny.
I was gonna say, we should create it.
I thought you did, I was like, oh, you're so good.
No, we just email Jenny and she'd send it to us.
Okay, thank you. But along the lines of this new web, the updated webpage is that we will, as things happen, be able to, when we make a decision on something, or as something happens, we'll update that page immediately, we just need to get the word out that please, go to, check this page, we, we're, that's where we find the latest and greatest information.
So one of the first things is also though, is about the webpage, is to get an active school board page that we can all have access to, you know, so that we can...
I think the other thing that will make the budget a little easier this year, now that, as Lindy said, we've played a year of whack-a-mole here, we're, we're sort of starting in different places, it would be our intent to get pieces of the budget out to you throughout, I mean, the budget information, the annual reporting information to you throughout the year, like, there's no reason in October, we can't tell you how many kids are at Sharon, how many kids are at Woodstock, because we already have them.
This is what I'm talking about, we should have a template.
We summarize it in the annual report.
And the goal is to have a template for the report, but then we're eventually just saying, right, picture here, or maybe the design's a little different.
We'll get the information if we're good.
There should be a more smooth flow of information, than just coming to y'all at once.
And I think we, this goes back to the report, we discussed it being in a Word format rather than a PDF format. So then we can adjust headings, we can change, you know, if we wanted to...
Well, as I say, I work with this very nice design program that I use for all my posters and all my publicity for the theater, and man, you start getting used to it.
Yeah.
And it's just, you really can design stuff, and it's just...
And it was in Word that you would want all that stuff.
You can, you can, you can insert anything like that into that, but, but anyway, but I think just working with Word, Word these days too, has got a lot more design elements than it used to. It's, it's just funny, because a couple versions, at least of the Stockbridge book ago, book ago, there was, don't, the, the decision was made to move away from Word to PDFs after they, there were some cut and pasting issues that happened, and then stuff got dropped because the documents were added, were added to the...
Right, okay.
But again, I think, I think regardless, what it comes down to is having more time for proofreading and more time for, for approval process, and not a, okay, we gotta get, you know, it needs to be in the mail on Friday, so we gotta get it printed on Tuesday, and just stand, you know, stand all night stamping it.
Right, yeah, exactly.
You get one of those postal meters, it makes it a lot easier to, vajing, 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 even if we use it once a year. Good, but we still, we're actually past that.
Yeah, so we're on calendar, so I think that would make sense for Jenny to start to create...
Jenny, can you, do you need some help, or do you wanna do it?
Well, I think I passed around and everyone else can, I don't think we need to meet separately for it.
You include Tara on that.
Yeah, definitely.
I think it was November, it's when you have to communicate, what, November or December, the board of trustees in Rochester.
I thought it was November, but I don't...
I think it said December, I'm like, no, we're doing November, let's be a month on time.
Yeah.
Why don't we do that, like...
Do we have to do that?
Because the calendar for the annual report should be embedded in a lot of letters.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Stockbridge is just a letter, Janie.
Stockbridge is just a letter.
By April, by their April meetings, Stockbridge trustees, just need a letter.
Oh, we did, we did, we still that full year off.
Be something to put on the board.
Can you...
So do we have to...
I think we actually have to go to the...
Can we do sort of an Excel spreadsheet, or whatever the spreadsheet is, and it's on to a Word page?
I'm talking about...
Export it to the, to the...
Excel on to Word.
Yeah.
I mean, it's hard, because we have any trustees and public funds, control the public...
Well, that's what I wanted, so you have to make sure that it's finished, then put it in there, because then every time you change, you have to go back in the...
Money, it's just being managed.
You can't, if you copy and paste, you can't edit it, you have to go back and redo it.
So I'm just thinking about, because if we wanna do this text in between...
We've got our own tab.
Yeah, you can put tables in the text, like text, table, text.
I'd like to see how that prints out though, because I just feel like...
That's exactly.
It's boxier.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
There's more space, whereas Excel, you can adjust everything, so they're all equal.
Well, in an Excel sheet though, you can also un-highlight the, the columns and rows, so you don't, they don't print, and so you can just write within the Excel.
I guess that's something, I mean, hopefully, you know, I haven't worked at, yeah, because that's just something I, I have such a clear vision in my head.
If you do the report in Word, it will look fine.
Right, and just copy and paste the tables.
Yeah, it'll look fine.
We just have to know, and then we'll just go and know which one has to be replaced when they're updated. Okay, good, calendar, so should you want a list of all the things that should be on there?
If we want to, I will.
Wouldn't that be helpful, anybody bring some...
Our one thing is the November meeting with the board of trustees in Rochester.
Concerts.
In terms of time, Jenny could just put the calendar up, and when we see it, we can all list our things on it. Set a taking time, now or die.
Oh, no, I gotta take time now. Okay.
Are flexible.
Right, I mean, that's the thing you should put on is our annual meeting.
Yep.
What, you wanna know when record cards come out, I mean, you want that kinda stuff?
I don't, I think it helps us, it helps us now do our job to know, to know all the stuff that administrators know, of dates and kind.
Not a chance.
I'm just saying, not a chance.
I know way more than you.
I like parents that know that too, but I don't think...
No, I didn't test.
No, I just meant, I wasn't telling you everything I know, that's what I would say.
Student data.
Well, is, there's no school calendar like that has all this information on it already.
That's actually our plan, to get out a calendar that has the concert dates, the comps, the...
There's an S U calendar.
So if we had access to that, then we wouldn't have to put it on our own board calendar.
That's true, and maybe the board calendar should be more our action items.
It's your working calendar.
It's your working calendar.
You have to do something about it, yeah.
That's an S U calendar.
So it's two separate calendars.
Well, there'll be a school calendar and then the school board calendar.
There's an S U calendar.
Because your working calendar, you need to take action.
Yes, your S U calendar.
Concert, please, show up.
Which is good.
Concert, you're just mom.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the thing, one of the goals, I thought, part of the calendar was supposed to help us see too, was to say, okay, these meetings are the meetings about the budget, so they're gonna be sucked up by that, so where can we fit in to the...
That's a good point.
You know, when do we have that lull, so we can address talking about the building, or, you know, our second language program, or talking about our, whatever, you know, is under, you know, when, when can, when do we have more opportunities for Janie to teach us about literacy?
That's a really good, yeah.
I would love that.
Stand up, Janie, we wanna see your shirt, stand up, we wanna see your shirt, so here's the deal, if we don't learn, it means Janie has a topic.
About what? Not yet, do I have anything to say?
On topic, we have another one.
You egg her on, it's your, you could everything you...
She has a whole... It goes like this.
I know, I know.
And more can I say? We get to each other, Bruce.
So are we happy with the calendar then, enough discussion, Jenny's going to, to create one, and it will be our working calendar, and we'll start to...
Yeah, Jenny, I'd like to, and maybe I think our first action should be the timeline, it'll go into this calendar, what we think a timeline is for the annual report, working back from the meeting. Or maybe working back from actually the mailing day, and then working back printing day, and then working back, yeah, that way then we know, when, when then we start figuring out, okay, when should, but we can find out from you, you know, when, when most likely, DOE or whatever it's called, is gonna have us, AOE, is gonna have budget, I think, budget numbers and stuff like that.
Right, well, that's what we'll do in our committee, and then we'll apply for accounts.
And we'll have Tara on the list.
And Tara on the list, so she can add some important things too. Are there grants that we should be putting on the calendar that we, as a school board, should be like aware of, dates, that, make sure that, I'm like, there's getting attended, like in case we switch, yeah, you guys are gonna be here forever, but like, that we know that, up to the principal...
Typically, you wouldn't put grant deadlines on your working calendar.
No, not my, yeah, okay, that's true.
Your working calendar is really stuff that the board has to take action on.
Okay.
And Cynthia Powers tells us.
Okay.
That does know when the grant deadline comes.
Right.
Okay, I mean, just typically, that's what a working calendar is.
Well, like you, you had that farm to school.
Yeah, that one, I'm pretty sure it came up in like September, October.
And is that on anybody's radar, is that on the, the people who would tell you that there's grants coming up, is that a grant that's on their radar, so I guess that would be for...
Well, I guess the question I would, would ask our, our principals is, you know, do you feel like you're getting enough, you know, because some of the, sometimes the grant coordinators seem to focus more on like the titles and the bigger grants, you know, and are we getting, you know, do, do we need to be, are we getting enough support, so we're getting the farm to table grant opportunities, we're getting the tobacco, and some of the wellness grants, and the various like matching grants for kitchen equipment and things like that, or is that something we should be doing on our end?
I think they come out pretty regularly. I think they're pretty regular, now if it's like something that's local fund, and not driven by like a large, like...
Like Burn Foundation?
You're egging people on again.
Yeah, where's my money from the Burn Foundation?
Yeah, like farm to table, like what Megan's talking about might be something that's more localized, so those would be good to know about, but I'm not sure if it's to go on a working calendar.
Right, well, no, I was kidding, I was more just, we were too, when she was mentioning grads, not so much about the calendar per se, but are we getting the support we think we need to get all the grants that you feel we, we should be getting granted for?
I think so, we usually just go to Cynthia and say, we're looking for money to do this.
Seventy-eight thousand dollar cut in our grant funding this year.
Title funded. We need to get a robust amount of whatever grants, grant funds are available, I never, I know Lindy left it to me, but I never feel like, oh geez, Rochester, Stockbridge got shortchanged on this one.
No, farm, right, I don't feel shortchanged, I would say, like farm to table is probably something that's new, like, not new, but just like, it sounds like maybe it's a different source, so we should pursue it.
Yeah, I'm curious, because we didn't...
Because of poverty numbers and...
Went down?
And, and just like you, I think that we were, they changed the way they collected that information from a, from a, almost a hand count to an electronic count, and I don't believe that it's been accurate, and I think we've been shortchanged because of that, and... And I think we've been shortchanged because of that and you know you were, I mean, we think there's 14 kids at stake here, they're all varying degrees of worth, in other words, the preschool versus the high school kids versus the poverty kids, but, you know, and only because we spent the last two.
Is that a federal assessment for poverty?
No, it's state, state collection numbers. The free reduced lunch is certainly something we have to work on, we have to make sure we get those forms.
Get the forms.
Some how.
Okay, so, I was talking to somebody about this, because, and I understand it totally, parents don't wanna apply, they don't want to. So what this school did was, they sent out at the beginning of the month, whatever it was, a statement, parents paid through the mail or gave it directly to whoever, and then everyone just got lunch. So no one knew it was free and reduced, no one knew who was paying, everyone just got the lunch.
The only people that, and maybe high school, I know high school's a little bit different, but at the elementary level, the only people who know are the parents that qualify and myself and Janet Whitaker, for example. The kids have no clue. They just go through the line and Janet just checks off who got lunch and then it gets the entry.
Well, some school districts, some schools, when the parents come in for the first, you know, like if you have like an opening picnic or something like that, they try to get the paperwork filled out there or, or send it home there, you know, and try to get it back. The thing is, we want people to fill it out because then we can do the rest once they do that, cause we need to know who's eligible and who isn't eligible.
Can we reframe it somehow?
Can they send it directly to the SU if they know, if they're worried that people might?
It's not so much that they, they think somebody's gonna see it, there's just, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna apply for this, it's a stigma more than I'm a.
Can we repackage it somehow so that it's?
I don't know, but we've gotta get a better way.
I've called a couple tough families at Rochester who historically have never applied, had great conversations with the mom in both cases, but she just said, we simply don't accept charity. She sees it as charity. And she was very polite, very respectful, but that isn't what we do.
Can't argue for that.
So I don't know how you, I don't know that you can repackage that. There's other kids that we just simply have to get on top of, that's another thing that happens, I don't think it happens in Stockbridge as much as Rochester, we had some pretty significant balances. And we're just gonna have to be a little more aggressive in trying to collect them.
Or send out the whole package.
Word is all about, these are all the paperwork you need to provide for your child to come to school. What if everyone fills one out?
They'll get sent home, they'll get sent home and just.
Well, you have, I mean, what if everyone gets the same form to fill out and we just know that certain.
It's not a mandated form for your child to be enrolled in school.
They also have to put down some sensitive information on how much they make and.
Social Security number.
Parents, all the parents get it, that it goes home with them, it's just that they don't fill it.
Was it always this laborious for, always? What do we do?
Well, I think we need to get the word out that it.
Tell them how it's gonna help. How can we do this?
As I say, we can't have side conversations, doesn't work.
Well, and just, is this a question, I'm sorry, I know we're right in the middle of it, but I'm trying to keep us, it's 2:35, so is this, I love all our conversations.
We can talk about this in our meeting.
Yeah, cause is it part of the retreat?
So the retreat is closing remarks and open discussion.
Yep.
But not that open.
And I just feel like we have a lot of.
I had five seconds left on my timer, it was about to go off, so good thing.
I think for the closing remarks and open discussion, we should kind of make sure we all understand what the next steps are that we're doing with what.
Well, and also, I think it's always a good thing to go back and what stuck with people from today, you know, what's sort of the thing you're, you're walking out with.
Well, you asked me to collect this information and I haven't had a chance to go.
You haven't, you haven't, I mean, I've been.
Maybe we should have done it at the beginning, but.
I looked through it.
I'm sorry about the extra pages and a couple of.
Do you have that for us?
One statistics, right?
Yeah, I basically used, there was, it was in my adjournments actually, information from the Burlington Free Press article that just came out about two months ago about this. For some of these, the others are pretty much to remain to us and the state. So if you go to the first one, I think we pretty much explained the numbers and where they're projected to go. If you could see the light line, this is Vermont Public School Enrollment Historical Data and Projections. The darker line is the history and the lighter line is where they project that it's gonna go over the next kind of 10 years or so. You're following, the next one is some of the towns around Vermont that are up in population and others are down. I dispute Royalton, I'm not sure it says Rosie and Royalton as it may look on here.
Unless you have the Vermont Public School students and there's no.
Yeah, well, you know, I think they've had some hard times and we've gotten some of the families that we had, but.
Bennington did far that much?
That's what it said.
Bennington College is closed.
No, 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 not Bennington College, it's named like, it's southern Vermont.
Well, this is under 18, so it shouldn't be.
Good job.
Oh, okay, that's true.
So the next one is the towns with the biggest gains in their childhood population, 13 through 17. Like I say, again, Royalton one I'm surprised at, I'm not sure it's right, but.
Where does this come from, the VSB?
This came from a Burlington Free Press article that came out and some of it was census stuff, some of it was VSB, some of it was the Agency for Education. Then they have the ones that lost the greatest numbers, which are Bennington, Valley City, Royalton, it's Randolph and Linden on the next, next place. We do have, Lindy and Bonnie did the work on our own schools to see where that is. There's another one here, it gives a little more current data instead of the big picture one at the beginning. These are the FT, FTT, full-time equivalents, FTEs, student count from 96 to 16 and how that went, you can see it's just hovering above 80,000 kids in the state now. And here, we, we got some of the information from the AOE, the base education rate and what that is, is the average of the schools in the state and what it is. This is in high schools, these are all schools in average now, that the base education rate is $10,130. The contract renewal date, growth limit is, let's say if we had to, if we had a multi-year contract with a bus company and we wanted to decide whether or not we would work with them to continue that contract, if it was over 2.7%, we could, we had to rebid. You have to stay under that 2.7% if you wanna continue a contract with somebody, if you go over.
Is that the same with the teachers?
No, it's not, but this is more or less stuff, you know, that we, that we.
Support, support employees or is that?
No, 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 that's not, it just, this is like stuff we buy.
Oh, okay.
And so that 2.7% is, is the number that if we go beyond that, and this year, the bus company's rate of increase was almost 10%, so, and they didn't want us to, they didn't wanna talk about continuing because it would have had to be that or under in order for them to do that, they were saying, look, we're bringing in new buses, we're improving things and we can't stay with that number. I don't wanna make the bus company the scapegoat here, but that's one of the things that comes to mind is when this is.
To me, is there such a number like this for teachers contracts and support contracts?
Well, we have certainly where it's been running, you know.
How much was the increase per negotiation?
Yeah, each, the last couple of contracts for us have been around the 2.9% range, I think it might be on.
Is that per year or is that in the whole contract?
Yeah, I think it's in there, a little farther along. So just to finish up this statewide thing, the pre-K tuition is 2,356, that's what the state will kick in for the preschool students.
And this is current data as of today?
Yes, it is, yes, it is. And then, of course, you know about the excess spending threshold.
But that's more. That's more, cause it's a new year.
Mm-hmm. This is all current stuff. Then we, you wanted to know a little bit about the price index and I tried to get an idea about what that is, it's over the year's percentage change. And this is 16 through 19 and how it's changed, the dotted line is if you take food and energy out of that, it's, you can see the difference of that, so if you ask for the CPI, so, moving right along. We wanted to, one of the, one of the indexes that the state uses is the New England Economic Partnership Government Goods and Services Index, and so this gives you, I think, how many years of this, 10, 12, an idea of how that, this is not people, these are things, government things, goods and services that are purchased and what it's been and the average we put at the bottom so that you can see what all those things total up to, so. I also have, yeah. You wanted a little, a little bit of information on heating oil and that kinda thing and where that's been, so I did include that in the back, it's a little light, but you can see how that's been through 2014.
Gone down and then back up.
Yeah, 2014 to January 2019 and how that's gone, October through March, that's heating oil and propane. And, let me see.
Dangerous.
Yeah, cost of living increases, each one of the state employees are in a different group. I know that Section D, or is it C, is judge, Section D is judges under state employees, Section C is emergency personnel, state police. I think teachers are B, or they may be just the state workers there, I had to look some of this up cause I wasn't really familiar, but teachers have three different groups. The ones in Group A are probably the ones that date back to entering the system back in the 80s and they have their own group for the time that they were employed and then more recently, B and C have been involved, so, and then municipal employees and they've got their own group status and a lot of it has to do when they served, when they were employed, that's how that works.
Are support staff at school, municipal employees?
No, they're, they're in with the teachers.
They are.
Yeah, they're not in the same category as the teachers, but they're in the, they have their own category within there.
If you sort of added, this is what I was getting to, and thank you for all of this, this is great information. The thing I was getting at was if we added all these percentages together, or, and I wouldn't know exactly how to do that, but the idea that then we could look at our budget and sort of go boom, 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 projecting out four or five years, what are the fixed costs or at least the ballpark fixed costs that we have no control over that are gonna be handed to us? And that's sort of the next step with this, is that I would love to just see what that, what, what the totals of each, do you hear what I'm saying? Just that way, cause it sounds like it's so much a part of what we're talking about, understanding what, the future, you know, and if we know some of it, let's know it now, let's, 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 let's know it now.
I'm looking for health insurance, I thought I had a page on here that had health insurance on it.
I didn't see that.
Well, I looked it up.
I think our rule.
Is it the sap rate?
We don't have, we have like three, three errors between the two schools, so the other groups, there are nowhere near nothing.
But there would be, but there's certainly fuel costs, fuel costs going up, supplies going up, food costs going up, all those things are fixed, busing going up, these are all the things that are very much fixed and that we can project out. Teacher contract is renewed, renegotiated every three years?
So we're up this year, we will, we will be negotiating when school begins.
Oh, okay.
For support.
Welcome to my world.
Is it every two years?
Yeah, but it was.
Just end for the teachers, there was a two-year agreement that was, that sunset, sunsets, I mean, they got one, they're gonna be on that agreement this current year, but we're negotiating this current year from beyond that. And the big thing is, do we, are we gonna have health insurance included or not?
They asked everybody to slow down till the state healthcare thing got going.
Oh, okay.
That's why I brought this, this.
What's the normal period between negotiations?
Whatever we did, whatever we looked with, two years, one year, two years.
Oh, wow, so you can, I didn't know it was flexible, I thought it was set.
But we were told that we really couldn't go beyond this year because they're trying to do this, which is the state health insurance discussion. Yeah, this is the NEA position.
Theoretically.
You can have this, I made copies for you all.
Are they favor of it?
Yeah, well, they're, they're doing their dance, you know, so is, so is this, this school district, so I don't know whether we're able. It's, it's really important that we know because going forward, we're not gonna, you know, it might be difficult if we don't know. And this is, this is the, this is the state's side. This is their position, that's the NEA position and this is the state side for the church.
Oh, so they have two different.
Yeah, they're, they're trying to work, work committee.
They're negotiating it for themselves. I have a side question, are the support staff evaluated?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
They am, everybody's evaluated.
Everybody's evaluated, that's why I told you earlier, this is the first year.
I didn't know if support staff was included in that.
Anybody else want one of these?
Yes, please, if you have a question. Okay.
All right, well, to look at his, talking about projections, I, and I'll take away kind of what we talked about this meeting, I again go back to our youngest population, this preschool population, and I don't know what happened in Stockbridge, the, the kids that were born in 2016 are going to be our three-year-olds, 16, 17, 18, 19, our three-year-olds, so I, there's 11 of them that were born in Rochester in 2016. Now, of course, some people moved, some people come in, but just looking at what I know, then the year after that, there's nine of them that were born, so that would be the next ones coming in and then the year after that, there was seven. So it still is for, quite a population of, of children and if our space is only for 15, but we already know 11 births that happened three years ago, that doesn't leave a lot of space for anybody else to move in or, or anything, so.
And the worst thing we could be doing is turning away.
Right.
Pre-K. And so pre-K from Grahamville Hancock.
Yeah.
Anyone that's willing to put their kids into our side.
So like I said earlier, just to summarize that, the number of kids, three-year-olds we have coming in this year is great, it's 13 at this point unless somebody's changed in the last couple weeks, which, no, it's 14, I'm sorry, which means we will have room for one three-year-old the following year if we, all status quo is decided, so we're gonna have to find a second space.
This is my, how about.
Where are we in Stock?
Um, low, I would say there's five four-year-olds and three three-year-olds. And it's not to say, Steph Colton pointed this out to me the other day, that last year, like the second week of August, we had seven kids register in Stockbridge.
People aren't thinking about school until right before school starts.
They're not thinking about three and four-year-olds on the same calendar, they think about kids who go K6.
Right.
Yeah, so.
See, your point being.
Well, that was, what you asked, what my takeaway was, my takeaway was that we don't have space for these guys right now and we need to make space for them.
Expanding pre-K.
But for this year of our conversation, if we do.
Takeaways?
That might be for August, that we could say that our visitor, our Stockbridge. That might be for August, that we could say that they're busy with our Stockbridge campus that has a rigorous programming and is part of our school district, that, you know, we try to keep them in our two schools.
The only little bit of a dilemma there is some of these kids are from families that don't have transportation or the ability to go down to Stockbridge.
Yeah.
So they will just not go. That's a little bit of a wonder.
That's true. And we do have us going every day from our, our parking lot, our Rochester school going to South Royalton to see kids to the...
You are supposed to have someone that rides.
You're gonna have someone that rides, and then they have to come back each day.
True, true.
But not that it could, not that it could go far. I'll take a in, stuff going far.
Okay, have one takeaway. Additional room for pre-K.
My takeaway is what I, is just this decision that we've got, we've got a year to make a decision about Rochester school space.
I don't think we have a year, I think we have six months.
Well, that's what we, that's what we were talking about before that we have, but I think you're right. We need to make that decision, right, in six months so that the school can plan for the move.
Right.
Yep, so we have six months.
I need to plan for community meetings so that they don't feel like we're just telling them what we're doing.
That's, that's, that seems to me, I like it because it's just, it's also my takeaway because it's like a really good, we're moving, we're moving, we're moving on that.
Meeting.
Community meetings.
Yeah.
And we don't, we didn't schedule today a meeting for the engineering study to be presented. So I don't know if that's...
I thought that already happened.
Not for the general public, not in such a, anyway, sorry.
The tenants are here, in case you want to know, they just drove in.
But what else? Let's finish with takeaways.
It did happen in June. They came and presented.
There was one, because I know I wasn't there.
Right.
We're not being there.
They presented the whole thing, the executive summary.
Yeah, it would have been June.
Yeah.
They presented something.
They presented twice, yeah.
Right.
That's right.
I'm not sure if we were expecting more of a presentation, though.
No, not to my...
I mean, they, we, they had, they, they told us that they would be willing to come to a community meeting.
Yeah, okay.
And, and be part of that if they, if, if we wanted them to, you know?
Whether or not it's a good idea or not.
But I think, you know, we do need to, my takeaway is that we do need to move with a quickness on this whole process because it'd be very easy for us to get, get, get through a bunch of it and then realize we don't have time to make the decisions that we need to make for, you know, in a timely fashion.
Yeah.
I think, you know, saying, we need to, we need to commit to making that Rochester building decision so that it happens for next year.
Building decision.
You know, and we have to, it may mean, like I said, I think it's, it's important that we commit to, to making that decision, and then if we can't, we can't. But rather than saying, "Well, we'll make the decision and we're gonna get all the information", you know? Sometimes perfect is the enemy of good.
Exactly.
And I think it's important that we, that we, unless there's some real reason to not be moving to making this decision, we need to make the decision come hell or high water, even if we don't maybe have all our Ts dotted or our Is crossed.
So do we need to, as a group, do we need to go to a select board meeting in the town of Rochester to talk to the select board? Do we need to invite them to a special meeting that we have? Where is that communication? Where should we go and ask what that...
I thought we said that? I thought we said last time, because we were talking about that, that meeting, and we said...
Wait till this...
Somebody said, somebody said, "You make your decision. Leave all your options open. Right now, we own both buildings." And that we, you know, before anybody gets attached to one or the other buildings, we should make the decision.
So you're thinking we should, should, well, we should tentatively make our decision and then approach that and say, "This is what our board's inclination is."
Right, well, I think part of, we, we did a good portion of that today.
Right, that's what I thought, too.
We said, "You know what? It really is, it looks like the high school is, is the building that we should, we should be making our investment in unless we come up with..."
Yes.
You know, some, some sort of compelling reason, because educationally, we see, you know, it's the building that doesn't need an expansion. It's the building that doesn't need a million-dollar heating plant upgrade to, to, to be viable. So, you know, for those reasons, at least the engineering study directs us towards the high school.
And I'm not saying talking to them about, "Here, we're ready to sell." No, more of just, this is where we are in, in our process.
Got you.
I think you ought to do the community meeting first.
I don't think we want to say which meeting...
I think we're trying to solve.
I think we're trying to solve. I think we need to...
Well, that's what I'm saying. We say that this is where we are.
Create conflict, just like, "No, I want this building."
Right. We just had a meeting, we are, you know, does the town see any value?
You're saying probably the select board.
So the select board, does the town select board have any value in the elementary building? Because they probably need some time to do their own study and decide what their needs, or if they have any need for or use for it.
I'm just gonna jump in. I think we're trying to solve something. We don't have the rest of the people's takeaways yet.
Yeah, I want to make sure. We're almost done with time.
Rigorous, literacy, focus, and monitor. Yeah, we need to, aren't you surprised? That's my goal.
Well, that's a takeaway. Takeaway from the meeting. It's not, it's not your ongoing agenda, it's a takeaway from the...
But it's a good one.
Because the whole time, because the whole time we were talking about everything else, you were going through this.
Well, and we keep talking about seeing the testing scores, but we still haven't seen...
That's why I said monitoring, that's what I... You said that by next meeting we should have.
So, that brings me to, that brings me to two takeaways. One, big picture, what, what is a viable school? But two, I think we really need to, I think we really need to start to have the convers... I don't know. We need to think about the structure of our meetings. We get in the weeds really quickly, and not that I don't enjoy our time together, but I feel like we then go back into the same weeds every month over. Are we gonna start to move to more smaller committees like we did in the annual meeting? And then a group comes in and presents, so we can do things like give an hour and a half to look at student achievement data and still feel like the other pieces are happening without all of us staying...
Being part of every...
Right.
Shortening it. Efficient, efficient.
Efficient.
Efficient decision making.
Right, and, and there's multiple, like you said, there's different ways to go about the way of, like, time tasks, time, time it, that that's it, that's all we're given to that subject, or like you said, if there's a need for more, well, then we need a subcommittee that they need to go and bring this back to the board.
It's the one thing we really haven't done much of at all, the subcommittees. And it really is a way...
And we started to, last year, we had the education committee and then kind of like the budget...
I'm just gonna add mine to Lindy's because it's kind of connected to hers, is I'd like us to look at this whole relationship of meetings. I'd like to figure out a way where that you guys charge Bruce and Lindy and I to do the things we've been hired to do, and then you guys work on the, the vision and the goal setting and the really important conversations. Because sometimes you spend a lot of your time talking about, just figuratively, who's gonna put the snow tires on the bus, and that's what you hire us to do. That's not how you should be spending your time.
I would love a list, a list of what we should be focused on and what we should not be focused on.
Yeah, what's boards?
Yeah, I mean, I know they send us all those things. Policy and budget.
There's a whole strand called policy governance that Bruce probably knows a whole lot more about tonight, but a lot of boards are moving in that direction so they can create more time to talk about the things that are really important to them.
So who else has left a takeaway? Policy governance, there's, there's a lot more trust that needs to be...
Oh, yeah, it's built on trust, no question about it.
Policy governance. The last takeaway we didn't talk about is we need to have our marketing plan put together, and that may well be, or maybe should be a subcommittee as well. But figuring out how, you know, how we can tease out what our strengths are. I mean, obviously, we can't put out a brochure talking about our incredible test scores at this particular time.
Yeah.
Or our campus. But we, we can, we, we need to start thinking about what are the strengths that we, that we can have, and what can we be saying that's positive? And then starting to collect those stories and those anecdotes so that we can put together, you know, a promotional material that says, you know, "This is what's great about our school. This is why you should, you know, send your kid down from Hancock to our school, or send your kid to, from Pittsfield to here instead of Killington." Takeaway?
Well, the number one thing was the high school building. If we're making a decision, I'm very happy that we are moving towards making more concrete actions moving forward. The cost of all these repairs, I think, is my takeaway, that we need to keep in our minds about not maybe raising the money through bonds, but trying to find money from within so we can not be putting more tax burden on our, our community members. But mainly, I'm glad we're moving in a direction of making some really big decisions about that bonus.
Bruce, take away?
Me, he wants me taken away.
Oh, Danny, that was classic.
Well, I, you know, I know that there have been missteps in the past, and I, we've been set back in helping all of you to get the things you need and have them correct. I, I just need time to work on new steps, to be, to be of assistance with all of you.
But from the meeting today, what's your takeaway?
I think you're, the biggest thing you, you're working towards is the facilities and how you're gonna deal with that. I mean, we've talked at it at length. And maybe the beginning of a calendar of when you're gonna do things, what's most important, what's second, and what's beyond that.
Anybody else?